I'd like to call to order the Wednesday, June 5th, special meeting of the Farver School Committee. Deb, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia? Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Ms. Larrabee?
Here.
Ms. Pereira?
Here.
Mayor Coogan?
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting to any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings and transmissions are being made where the proceedings are unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged impermissible. Salute to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one individual signed up for citizens input. Three minutes, Jordan James Sylvia. It's on the topic, on the agenda. Please, Mr. Silva.
Hi, I'm assuming the agenda is based on the new superintendent's?
Yes, correct.
Alright, so I basically came here. I don't know if any of them are in attendance, the people applying for the job. I don't believe so. No? Okay, so that's super concerning because I came here to warn them that you're applying for a job to be the head person for an education system in a city that's not serious about education, contrary to what everyone says. I say that because again, as we have this give and take, I've said numerous times, three-minute thing, nobody wants to hear from the public. And also, the fact that the people who are applying for the job, they clearly don't care about parental feedback or from the community, they want to cash a paycheck from, so it's super concerning. But if they ever do get to watch this, my concern is, last time I was here, asked to leave, right, because I was calling people out for lying regarding the Tansy Street, the Tansy School issue, and then when they were caught about the lying, they were, they came in here and, you know, I mean, gave me a hard time, whatever. More than that, billions of dollars we've spent on education in Fall River, we get 50% graduation rates, that says we're not serious about education. You guys are supposed to be responsible for this person who's going to take this job and ultimately all the kids in the city. Who's responsible for putting you guys here? Because I don't want to put it on you. City of Fall River, people like me, right, voters, 90% of them don't show up, right, to vote. So, that's what I mean by saying the city doesn't, really isn't serious about education. That's the reality, right? I could go on and on for hours. I'm not allowed to speak over the three minutes, obviously. I love to talk about John Taylor Gatto and his essay on psychopathic schools and, you know, how we're actually mal-educating kids in many ways. Nobody, it's not a topic that people really want to talk about. I asked Maria Ponce to talk about it, to bring some sort of financial literacy to the, to the school system. No appetite for that, even though during the election, had some of the candidates mention that specifically. Balancing checkbooks respectfully, that's not financial literacy, that's like normal, basic human survival, right? That's clearly not. And again, these things lead to five decades of poverty and ignorance in Fall River. So I'm sitting here hoping somebody is brave enough to do something out of you elected people or this person who's supposed to head this whole system and actually buck the system and change anything. But that's not what happens in Fall River. It's personal financial gain at the expense of all the kids and their futures. How about this, forget 50% graduation rates, kids who get straight A's coming out of here, go to Ivy League schools, who's to say they're educated, they're coming out as communists, right? And therefore censorship and everything else. Successful people, capitalism is all evil. So, I would ask all of you guys, this person who's going to run this system, do some soul searching, right? And like, who's going to really do anything?
Thank you.
To fix this system, you know?
Appreciate it.
That's all I'm asking for.
Appreciate it, thank you.
There are, one thing I'll leave you with, Mr. Coogan. I know I detailed a lot of adversity, the silver lining is in all those problems, there's opportunity to improve things.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Alright, so we're going to take a brief recess wait for the arrival of Shelley. She's supposedly stuck in traffic, going away in right now. Mr. Agia?
Just a procedural question on, is there anything in place for, and maybe it is and I just don't, haven't heard, for the candidates to have equal opportunity to watch the other candidates in the order? Is there any procedures in place to protect that?
No, once they're done, they can sit here or they can leave. But we're trying to make sure they don't hear the questions for the other candidate so that it's fair. Everybody hears the question when they're at that table.
So, candidate two, three, and four will not have access to hear it?
They're waiting in the library. Glenn Koocher's watching them, then they're going to come down when they're called down.
That's what I'm saying, I'm asking if there was a process. I didn't know if they're all in the presence, they're going to be sequestered in a room?
They're sequestered in the library and they're waiting till their time. After they finish, they're more than welcome to stay because it's over. And then they can either leave or, you know, stay till the end.
Thank you.
We will talk a little bit about, what we're going to do is that all the members picked questions that they want to ask, so we're going to rotate. I know some of the questions are going to be out of order, but that's okay. So it'll be with the questions that we have, it'll go, the next one, I'll leave, then Shelley, then Tom. So we'll go through the questions on a rotating basis, maybe we'll go to the back so that Sarah and Kevin make sure their questions are asked first. I don't have any problem, I told, I told them we're going to be fair and rotate through so everyone gets the opportunity to ask their questions.
Now, when you say rotate, mayor?
So if I go start with one on this one, who's numbered at the end, the next, the next individual might stop.
I believe Deb put them in order.
Yeah, but they don't rotate, do they?
Yes.
Oh, they do? Okay, fine. But I just want to make sure everybody has the opportunity.
Yes, they rotate.
Okay, alright.
One through seven.
Thank you.
And then seven through twelve. Mr. Koocher, we're just waiting for committee woman Pereira, she's in traffic right now. She said a couple minutes. Thank you.
We want to thank everybody for coming out to the superintendent interviews for the Farver Public Schools. Our first candidate tonight is Dr. David Thompson. Come on down. Okay, Dr. Thompson, we want to thank you for taking the time to come down. We're trying, obviously with seven individuals, we're going to give everybody roughly eight minutes with you. If there's follow-up, if you don't use all the time, it's going to be a strict one-hour interview, we're going to time it.
Okay.
We appreciate you working with us to the best of your ability to give everybody the answers they're looking for. And again, we want to thank you for coming down, so we're going to start. I'll start the clock, are you going to start it or?
I can start.
Alright, so let's start the clock and I'll do the four-minute, you do the hour. Okay, thank you, Dr. Thompson. First questions come from Mimi Larrabee, Vice Chairman.
Hi, Dr. Thompson.
Hello, good to see you again.
Nice to see you again. Could you share with us a bit about yourself beyond what's on your resume and please tell us why Fall River and why now?
Yes. So, first of all, thank you for having me, it's truly an honor to be here. I've spent a good amount of time looking at and researching the Fall River schools. And, you know, there's qualities here that I have been searching for and that back up to what I have done in Norwood. And this is a good opportunity for me to continue the work around equity and inclusion. It's an opportunity for me to work on academic success in and around student outcomes. I am very focused on improving student outcomes and opportunities. I focus ensuring that students are enrolled in programs, given feedback for growth, and use that so that every student has a pathway and a purpose as they, as they leave, leave our schools. I believe in district improvement, facilitating a strategic plan. I love creating a vision and ensuring that that vision becomes a reality. I'm trained in planning for success, the DESE process for strategic design. I then set up my administrative team so that they have roles and responsibilities with that, and that's twofold, to make sure the work gets done, but also to ensure that we're building leadership in the leadership team. And, you know, why now? This is kind of, you know, I think, you know, in some aspects that this is the opportunity I've been waiting for. I've been greatly fulfilled by the work that I have done in Norwood. And just to give you a little context, when I, in 2019, our high needs population was about 38%, it is now just north of 60%. And that has changed the work in the district. It's a very short amount of time to have that kind of demographic change, and we're really only about 20 points off of Fall River. But the, the important piece of that for me, for me, is that that work has been deeply fulfilling and personally something that I would like to continue.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm next. Please provide your philosophy in budgeting and provide us with what your priorities are when you're building a budget.
Yeah, so when I look at a budget, and I'm probably going to keep harping a little bit on the strategic plan aspect, but the strategic plan and what we want our district to become should be driving our budget decisions. Like to start, you know, as close to zero as one can get in building a budget and building those priorities around what is going to positively affect our students and our student outcomes. So, with that, there is a collaborative process with that. I ask principals to go back, look at the, at their school improvement plans, look at their data in their buildings, and look at what they need to do, again, to get those student outcomes, bring those to the table. And, you know, we construct a budget from there, starting at zero, building up from there. And ultimately, what it comes down to is what is going to, you know, the most juice for the squeeze? What is really going to affect our student outcomes? What is definitely going to change, you know, some of the data that we're seeing and make sure that our kids have the best opportunity for a successful future? It is a collaborative process, there is a lot of conversations with the, you know, the city side, the municipal side of those aspects, as well as with the school committee in developing that budget. And ultimately, we need to be in a position, when I hand that budget over, that the school committee is comfortable with that and able to defend and support that in the process here in Fall River. I have, you know, over the last seven years, built very strong relationships with, you know, the town manager, the selectmen, and the FinCom, and take every opportunity to explain what the challenges and budget drivers are, not just during budget season, but throughout the year. And it is a back-and-forth conversation, and then when there's things where I can help them out, you know, with the school department, the key example is when we shut down with COVID and we started making meals for families with our food service. So, we work collaboratively together to make sure that the town is moving forward.
Thank you. Shelley Pereira?
Thank you. I want to apologize for my tardiness. I did not anticipate the traffic.
It's fine, I got to greet, I got to greet everybody who came in, so it's perfect.
Okay, I do appreciate your time, I want you to know that, I'm sorry about that. I have, my question's a little longer than most, so if you need me to repeat it, all of it or any part at any time, I won't hold that against you. So, some recent surveys show that there are approximately 55,000 various educational positions open statewide. The teacher shortage is not just a Fall River problem, but a national crisis. Educators are reporting causes varying from lack of support, unrealistic expectations, classroom safety, and pay. What do you feel the reasons are for the teacher shortage? And what experience do you have in recruiting and retaining educators and educational staff? And lastly, knowing our district, do you have any concrete ideas that you will be bringing forth to help support the staff we have, as well as recruit and retain new staff?
Yeah, yeah, and you're absolutely right, this is, this is a national crisis. I won't go too far off the rails, but, you know, for 20, 30 years, unfortunately, we as educators have heard how we're not prepared to do the job, and we're not doing the job, and we're not doing this. Well, that doesn't necessarily entice a lot of people to join the profession, which is a, you know, it's an incredible profession, it's one that makes a difference, you know, everyone is in the position they're in because they were taught by people, and we need to, we need to get back to that. In Norwood, we started doing signing days for people going into education, our graduates. So, and all of the, all the things that you have listed here as reasons for leaving are symptoms of our society at this point in time. Ultimately, we need to create a place of work that is safe and secure, where teachers feel valued and able to be successful, and that they can maximize their potential. Those are, those are three key things that need to happen. I did look, the retention rate this past year was 75% in Fall River, that's really kind of alarming. Norwood, I think, was 93 or 94%. And we have done a good amount of work, not perfect, a good amount of work on those three things, making sure that teachers feel supported, they're able to reach their potential, and, and that they have a future there. Most of our move, people who have moved out have moved for family reasons to be closer to where they work. That was a big change after, after COVID. The question I would ask is, what have we done with exit interviews, is to identify why people are leaving and then, you know, be in a position where we're addressing those issues. As far as recruiting, you know, I started a long time ago, going to college fairs, especially Bridgewater State, using Handshake, which is a national job posting board, to try to get our jobs out beyond just school spring. You know, and we, our shortages have not been in teachers, it's been in parents, actually. As far as, so that needs to continue, we need to encourage, you know, people to go into the profession, that dynamic needs to change. The other thing that we are doing now is that kids that are going into education, we are trying to recruit them to help run and work in our summer programs. So, twofold, we're giving them experience and we're indoctrinating them to some extent. The other thing that we should really start looking at is actually building our own system of developing and creating teachers. And that can be twofold, you know, you have Bristol Community College here, I mean, I taught at Diamond for AIC for a number of years and their education program there, I don't know if they're still working over there or not. This seems to be a better building, I know they're building a new one, but maybe we can get them here. But running programs in district to develop our own teachers from our, from our own residence in Fall River would be something that I would definitely want to look at.
Thank you. Next, Tom, Corey?
Good afternoon, Mr. Thompson. My question revolves around alternative education. Would you be an advocate in support of Fall River's alternative middle and high school, the Robert Madeiras Resiliency Preparatory Academy, when it comes to the curriculum, the physical plant, and possible Chapter 74 grants to enhance the hands-on component to skilled learning?
The, the short answer is yes, definitely, but I'll, but I will elaborate a little bit. So, again, back to my original comment about every single student having a pathway when they come out of high school and leave the Fall River Public Schools, I firmly believe that. Not everyone wants to go to college, should go to college, is necessarily a good fit to go to college. And especially now where, you know, even those that are going to college need to have a real good plan, an idea of what they, what they want to do. Otherwise, you know, they're circling around extra semesters here and hundreds of thousands of dollars of student debt. So, we need to be very proactive for all of our students about what their pathways are and what their opportunities are after they, after they leave us. Key component of that, and I'm actually very excited to have Chapter 74 programs here at, at Derfie, and that, you know, it is giving kids another opportunity and a way to engage in learning and to move forward. You know, we all, we all have seen the, the lack of tradespeople in our communities when, when we need someone to do it. They are fantastic careers, you can work a long time, there's no reason why we shouldn't be supporting those. You know, as far as getting grants and expanding programs, we have done that, it has not been Chapter 74, but we have created pathways at our high school, we have two, we're adding two more. They really are kind of, but they're both college and maybe, you know, delaying college, and I'll give an example, one is a healthcare pathway. We were partnered with Norwood Hospital, which is not online right now, but there was a flood that took it out, but also with Harvard Medical School. So our students are learning, you know, medicine skills or medical skills, it's not just doctors or nurses, it could be everything from, you know, a, a x-ray technician and these sorts of things, they're gaining all of these skills, they're getting micro-credentials as well. So when they leave high school, they could work for, you know, a medical facility as an, as an underperson to become trained as an x-ray technician or a phobotomist or something along that line. And the thought there, and again, very similar demographic, you have a lot of first, if they go to college, first time in the family, first college goers in the family, and just them jumping into a four-year college might not be a realistic financial piece, but I wanted our kids leaving the high school with some sort of work that was beyond, you know, nothing against Dunkin' Donuts, but against working in the food industry and not being really able to make a living wage. So they could work that there and then go to community college for a couple of years and then get into a technical school or what have you, what have you. And again, to ensure that they have some way of being successful and economically viable as members of our community.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next question up, Sarah Roddicks.
So like my colleague, this is a multi-part question, so if you need me to repeat anything, let me know, and I also speak really quickly, so if you need me to slow down, just tell me. So, we have roughly a 30%, 30, 33% special education rate in this district. So we have a substantially higher figure of special education students than other districts across the state. Of those, about a third of them are in substantially separate classrooms. So, can you tell me, or can you tell us, about your experience with creating and implementing inclusive practices for our special education students in the mainstream classrooms in our Gen Ed settings? How have you specifically worked to dismantle those systems of sub-separate placements as the norm and promote the inclusion of all kids in Gen Ed? And finally, can you give some specific examples of how you've worked to really dismantle that often siloed approach to special education services?
Yeah, this is, hopefully I won't get too passionate because I, I have experience with special ed, you know, as a classroom teacher, as a building level and district level administrator, and also as a parent, okay? So, it is something that I'm very passionate about, you could probably go back into the mid-'90s and see some heated discussions with me and members of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education over MCAS and how those tests were being administered to students with disabilities. But I will, I will get to the question. So basically, you know, we need to have a realization that after grade 12, the, the special education laws stop. And we're basically at a 504 American with Disabilities situation. And if we're not preparing children to function at a reasonable level when they leave our high school, okay, they are going to be at a disadvantage in the workforce, okay? Because they have to make, the workforce has to make reasonable accommodations. No one has to read the directions to them, okay? So this is a longitudinal, long-term process where we need to have students included, and we're scaffolding our instruction and, you know, Universal Design for Learning, Katie Novak's work is instrumental in this, right? And training teachers on how to, how to do that. But ensuring that the, the standards are being met and the outcomes are being there, but there are supports so that every student that is possible, and there are some that, you know, have significant disabilities that don't fall into this category, and I'm not specifically talking about, about those students, but most do, but they have to learn how to work around their disability, okay? And again, for that reason, I mean, you're not going to have, you know, if they don't learn how to work around that disability, it will consistently hold them back. Disabilities don't go away, okay? They don't go away, but we can learn to compensate, to use tools to work around these things. We need to be putting students in our regular classroom with their peers who they learn as much from as their teachers in many cases, to do the real work, the core work, the standard work that is, that is required to get a, to get a high school diploma, okay? To ensure that they're, and as they gain, you know, skills and abilities to work around these, we, we take down some of the scaffolds, so they become more and more able to work independently, okay? And I can tell you multiple stories, you know, I was told at one point when my child was in third grade, she would never pass the MCAS and she would never get a high school diploma. She has an associate's degree, okay? I have a cohort of students from Rainham Middle School who have graduated, who, same sort of thing, we did this then, we did this then, and have now graduated college, okay? So what I have done with, with that is that I have implemented that both in Blackstone Millville and in Norwood. What we are doing, and it's, again, it's, it's multifaceted, you have to get parents to trust you and buy into what you're doing because you have to change the IEPs, you also have to educate and fortify the, you know, the teachers and the educators on how to scaffold and support students in the classroom. You have to have enough, you have to have special educators in the classroom co-teaching. And what we, what we did is that we brought in Lisa Decker out of the University of Florida, who is one of the experts in co-teaching. I did it in Blackstone Millville, I've done it in Norwood, I did it in Rainham, to teach teachers how to do it, and the excitement, once it starts rolling, it starts picking up speed. So, and once we get into the "I am capable" mindset, then you get away from the sub-separate as the default piece. You're welcome.
Thank you. Next question, Bobby Bailey?
During your tenure as a leader, can you name any specific initiatives or programs that you've implemented or planned to implement to promote cultural proficiency in the district?
Yeah, so we have done, in Norwood, we, we started, well, so when I, when I arrived in Norwood in 2017, and again, you know, start this entry process, look at the data, there was a huge discrepancy in severe discipline for students of color, okay? So that was one of the first things that we were looking at, why that was happening, and making amends. So there are two things that we, that we did, we talked about, and we had training in implicit bias, and we also looked at our suspension, and basically what happened is that they did not have any alternative to out-of-school suspension. So we put alternatives in there to change that dynamic because sending a kid home does not necessarily change behavior, and actually that separation can actually increase behaviors over time because they're further and further behind and not connected to the curriculum. So then, you know, we, we get up to 2019, 2020, and we determined it's just we were going to do an equity audit. We had Mass Insight do that audit for us, surveyed, you know, parents, students, and came back with some recommendations. From that, the two most important recommendations were to look at our hiring process to get more representation in our, in our classrooms. I think at that point, we only had two people of color working in our schools, one is an aide and one is a teacher. The other one was looking at teaching practices that raised our, our level of cultural proficiency. So, we worked on both. We have used Highlander to do that training, and the school committee and the administrators did it first, and then we've done two, two years of training with, with the teachers. And again, it starts off with a cultural, social awareness of what those barriers are and how we should, should address them, building a culture in the classroom where we're not allowing that to happen, and raising the expectations for all, that all children can learn, and setting those up. Then there's the instructional piece where we are teaching them how to, you know, how to approach problem-solving, perseverance, and looking at skills on thinking and problem-solving. And then the, the last piece, which we're still working on, is really getting kids involved and, and active in that as well. The hiring piece, we changed our hiring practices a little bit, we do a little more screening to make sure we're not eliminating people just based on a paper screen, so we do kind of a quick five or 10-minute, you know, video interview to make sure we have representation. have representation when we get that. And since then, we have gone from one, I believe we're now at about 22 people of color working in our schools, which makes a huge difference.
Thank you. Next, Kevin Aguirre.
It's not a secret that Fall River has struggled with academic achievement. Excuse me. Our overall data shows that we are barely getting back to pre-COVID achievement levels, which were not adequate to begin with. Can you explain any specific situations where you were instrumental in quote-unquote "moving the needle" to improve academic achievement data in an urban school system?
Yeah, so, you know, I think everybody saw that dip and there's a good portion of us that are battling to get back to that piece. So what we, what we have done is that we have put in a progress monitoring and really ramped up our multiple, multi-tiered systems of support. In doing that, formalized that in, in Norwood, so there are blocks of time that that is happening. And we are measuring that progress, you know, continually. What we're seeing right now is we're seeing really good growth scores universally, even with our, even with our students with disabilities, you know, in the 40s, in that normal range. For overall, they're in the mid-to-high 50s, which are pretty good when you consider all the different populations. Unfortunately, that has not broken through the glass ceiling of MCAS, but I expect that it will happen. I will say that looking at some of your, your numbers here, obviously the 24 numbers are not in, but there has been progress. And again, we're still not there, but we need to keep pushing and doing that sort of work. The other piece that, that I think we need to go back to doing is looking at ensuring our students are connected to our schools and to learning and engaged in that. So what is that cultural piece? And this gets into the absenteeism piece as well. But how are we connecting with students and how are we making sure that they are connected to our schools? And that cultural piece, I think is something that we lost during COVID and we're having a very hard time bringing back. And, you know, the, the other piece is engagement. And what is our instruction looking like in our classrooms? And one of the things that, you know, and I'm, I know that you guys have brought in Project Lead the Way at the high school, I'm really excited about that. But we're looking at taking that methodology and applying it to other curriculum areas, specifically to raise that engagement and, you know, for our students. If it's, you know, if we're working on real-world problems and it has meaning to them, they're, they're going to learn more and learn deeper and hopefully that is going to shine through, you know? And, you know, I'll go back, as principal of Rainham Middle School, we became a Level One school from that same sort of piece. But the, but the one thing that made the difference is, you know, and again, I'm dealing with middle scores, was basically telling them that those MCAS results counted for something because we would make decisions on academics and where we would put them in the fall based on the numbers we would get in August. And once that happened, there was a little more urgency in May and June, so.
Thank you. Next, Shelley Perre.
We know that diversity and inclusion in any workplace promotes creative problem-solving, better decision-making, as well as increased productivity and decreasing staff turnover rate. Fall River serves a diverse population and we aim to promote diversity, inclusion, and equity throughout the district. Can you tell me what you believe the difference is between equal and equitable? And do you have strategies planned to execute in the district to promote equity in all our classrooms? Lastly, can you give us an example of when you have promoted diversity and inclusion in your workplace? Please provide any barriers you had to overcome and if and how the outcome was beneficial to the group.
Yeah, I think I might have answered a little bit, some, some of this with the other, with the other question. But, but, you know, equal and equitable, equal is everybody getting the same and equitable is getting what individuals need. Going back to that cultural proficient teaching strategies that I was talking about earlier, you would have a menu of scaffolds and strategies to bring all students up so they get access to curriculum, but you wouldn't use them with everybody all the time. You would use them where they're needed, that would be equitable. So, you know, as, as far as promoting equity, first off is we need to make sure we're hearing multiple voices, okay? And ensuring that everybody has a voice and feels that they belong and can see themselves represented in, in, in the schools. And that can be everything from, you know, symbols around the holiday to flags as they come in. One of our more, our most diverse schools, which is in South Norwood, has a flag of every student from every country they're from, and there's about 35 in that cafeteria, okay? So that ensures that they feel welcome and feel part of that culture. And, you know, example of promoting diversity and inclusion in your workplace, so we have done, so I'll do a couple of things. We have gone, started this past fall affinity groups where we're bringing groups together to offer support and have conversations about that. And they are led by different members of the school community. The other thing is that, you know, we have been diligent, and, you know, when I first arrived, I was kind of shocked because in December it was like there was only one flavor of holiday when I, when I first got there. We've, we've had those conversations, we've pushed some of those things that are not culturally appropriate for everybody to outside of the school day, not eliminated them, you can still have, you know, breakfast with Santa, but we're going to do it on Saturday morning, not during the school day, these sorts of things. And then, you know, and, you know, with that, you know, there, you know, that's, that's a change and change is hard. And, you know, a little bit of pushback and, you know, said, you know, we're not eliminating your traditional event, we're just moving it outside of the school day because it's not part of the curriculum and it's not something we, we shouldn't just be doing. You know, if we're going to be doing a culture, we should be doing all cultures and looking at that. And there's multiple ways to do that. Some is you can have an event that's one for all, or maybe during those times of the year when those events are happening, you take a little bit to talk about the different cultures and different celebrations.
Thank you. Mimi Larve.
Fall River is a very large and complex urban district. Please tell us a little about your leadership style and how you will motivate and inspire FRPS staff to achieve their best performances.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I won't argue that it's, that Fall River is a complex district, but so, but so is Norwood. You've got, we've got neighborhoods that are very much islands upon themselves. So my leadership style, first and foremost, is very collaborative. I like to bring people together. My decision-making style is to bring a problem forward and have a conversation about that and get advice from people, especially someone walking new into a district who might not have all the historical context for some of the decisions that might have existed beforehand. With that, I am also very clear on a strategic vision and objectives and outcomes and measurement along that side. I believe in developing leaders. I'm a leader of leaders. If you look at my resume, I've been, you know, president of the Principals Association, on the National Board of the Principals Association. I have taught leadership in, at the college level, and I have mentored incoming aspiring leaders through, through the Principals Association. So that is important because I fully realize that the rubber meets the road with the principal in the school. So I need to make sure that that person is operating at the highest ability that they can operate. And often I'm a thought partner with those people. They, they know that I have, you know, been in every seat along the way and I can remember the good times and the bad times and, and go through those and mentor them. But I'm my, I am trying to grow leadership in others. I am trying to ensure that we are all on the same page. And I'm trying to ensure that we have our goals and that we are all rowing in the same direction. So what I do is we have a strategic plan, the school improvement plans are based off of that, the educator improvement plans or the educator development plans are based off of that, so that everything is flowing in the same direction. And there's a priority. But getting through where we have got, and that's a collaborative effort, okay? It's not me sitting in, you know, in a closet, you know, scheming things. It's something that I engage the community with, both, you know, city council, school committee, other various stakeholder groups, bringing in and developing a vision and a plan for improving the school system. So it's collaborative. People will tell you that I am, you know, in working to develop others, that I listen intently, and I'm always willing to learn and I'm willing to go the extra mile to ensure that they're, because if they're successful in their buildings, in their classrooms, in their district offices, then we're all successful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Tom Corey.
Yes, Dr. Thompson. Fall River is a city with so many agencies throughout the whole community. This question is involving community engagement. Do you believe in building relationships with the many agencies in our community that provide services which in turn affect our schoolchildren and their families?
The short answer to that is yes. And I will give you, so if this is important work, if the schools are not involved, it's probably not working to the extent where it needs to be because, you know, those students are with us for a third of the day, sometimes more, right? So we need to, you know, in, you know, in some cases partner to get the work done, in other cases facilitate, but in all instances cooperate. And, you know, I will go back, you know, I'll go back, you know, as a principal, you know, had students who were, who were getting counseling from, from the local counseling session, you know, because of scheduling, you know, they would come in and, and do it, do it, you know, during school hours and come in and take the kids for half an hour. Because that, you know, without the, that lower-level safety, security piece in Maslow, we can't get to Blooms where they're learning at a high level, right? So then, you know, go fast forward, and this was kind of one of the few disagreements I had with the union because we wanted to do the same thing, because we had kids who needed, the problem is, is that you have kids who need services and they can't all get it after school because there's not enough slots to do it, right? So if we're not facilitating that, then that, that's a problem. And they're not getting the services, they're, they're not in a position to learn and perform in our schools. But even more so, there are other, you know, community-focused things that we have done. You know, so we have the, I'm trying to remember the name, but there is a mental health group in Norwood, between the Health Department, ourselves, and several community groups, including faith partners as well, working on mental health, getting, getting grants through, through the Health, the Health Department to facilitate that and make improvements. We now have a service where anyone in Norwood can call and get mental health help. We also looked at youth risky behavior from our, from our behavior survey, and there is Impact Norwood is another group, and police, fire, selectmen, FinCom, again, faith partners, other community members come together once a month and work on programs for that. And we've seen our, our youth risk behaviors decrease because of that effort. So again, when, yes, I believe in that. It's something that if we're actually going to, I mean, you know, people have talked about wraparound services, we need to, we need to give a big hug to make sure we can wrap around first.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Next is Sarah Roddicks.
Okay, so social-emotional learning has become a little bit of a buzzword in education, but there's not always a good understanding of what that actually means in action. So how do you ensure that the design and implementation of social-emotional learning, special education, and core general ed instruction align with the goals, values, and priorities of the district? Can you describe a time that you've successfully facilitated that coordination and collaboration? And then how do you promote that shared vision, overcome barriers across those different departments?
Right, I'm trying to, I'm.
It's not, she just, she just came up with that question.
Oh, she just came up with that question?
No, that was one of the ones that I had originally had planned.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm sorry, could you, could you read it again? Because I was trying to find the question.
So social-emotional learning has become of a bit of a buzzword in education, but there's not always a good understanding of what that actually means in action. So how do you make sure that the design and implementation of social-emotional learning, special education, and core general ed instruction aligns with the goals, the values, and priorities of the district? And then can you describe a time that you've successfully facilitated coordination and collaboration among those stakeholders? And then how do you specifically promote that shared vision and overcome barriers across those departments?
Yeah, so, so when I first started in Norwood, there was, there was, social-emotional learning was, you know, and again, that, that is teaching these, you know, the self-management, the relational skills, the organizational skills, the interpersonal skills that, you know, for various reasons, don't, don't seem to be sticking right now, right? But there, there was, that was simply just a quick time on the carpet. We did it and we're done. There was no positive behavior intervention system. There was nothing that really, what we would often call a school culture, right? So that was a major emphasis when we started was to develop that social-emotional learning. We have upgraded the curriculum, we have brought it all the way up through. Grade 12 looks a little different at the high school than it does obviously in first and second grade. But the next key piece to that is that you're teaching the lesson, but the learning's in the doing, right? It's not about listening to a lesson or a story, it's about applying it, right? So how are we integrating that into the curriculum, into the self-management skills that we're teaching in special ed and various other places, so that those are being secured? Then the next piece that we need to do is, we need, we need to measure whether the kids are actually acquiring the skills and making progress. And if not, and this is another piece that often doesn't happen, we don't go back and do the tier-two targeted intervention piece where we're re-teaching those skills or revisiting those skills with those kids. Because those are important. If they don't have, you know, other terms are soft skills, right? If they don't have the soft skills, are they really going to be able to function in the community, in a job setting, and, and, and do that work? So what, what we have done is that we have, you know, improved the, the curriculum, combined that with a positive behavior program in each of the schools, and it's different, okay? The acronyms are different, the overall arching goals are, are the same, okay? But, you know, you know, whether it's Bluebirds over here or Cardinals over there, I mean, the, the fundamental skills are the same, some of the verbiage is a little bit different than you get to the middle school and it's the same. And then that feeds into the positive behavior, the school culture piece, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. All of that is aligned with the, with the strategic plan on social-emotional goals, student safety, and what have you. So again, you know, do, do I think we're 100% there yet? No, I, you know, we had the, the COVID disruption, there's still more work to do, but we are in a much different place than we were back in 2018, 2017.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next one's mine. Any innovations you believe will help to improve student attendance? Something different you didn't know were to. Student attendance.
Student attendance. Yeah. Yeah, that is, well, again, so, so there's two things, that connectedness piece and that engagement piece, all right, are two things that we need to focus in on. So if students feel connected to the school, and that can be as easy as, hey, we missed you yesterday, we did this, we did that, we could have used your help. I mean, it's not, this is not rocket science, right? But, you know, so that, that connected piece, I missed you, I wish you were here. People need, kids need to hear that as well, right? And the other piece is the engagement piece. If the work and what they're learning is important to them, you know, most of them are not going to miss school, okay? And the reality is, is that we need to get on it early and often, and partner with parents to work on it because the more they're out, the, the bigger the problem becomes, right? The, the greater that, that separation, that lack of connectedness, okay, the more difficult it is to get them back in school and engage. We, we've dropped about five points, this was a major emphasis this past year. There's still work to do. Sometimes I get angry calls from parents because I'm picking on their kid, but as I said, we, we just need them in school so we can teach them. But that is, that is, that's, that's another one of those issues that is not just any particular town, it is pretty much universal. And it, again, it comes back to being connected to the school. There's, there's a disconnect that we are still trying to reconnect after COVID. And we need to be more purposeful about how we're going to do that.
I appreciate it. Next, Bobby Bailey.
Communication with the school committee. Without jeopardizing any sensitive information, can you describe a time when you had to make a difficult decision that involved working closely with the school committee and how you approached the process?
Yeah, never, no, I've never had a difficult decision. Yeah, never, no, I've never had a difficult decision. Yeah, the better question is, when isn't there a difficult decision? Yeah, so I guess, you know, I'm going to go back to probably the last one, and I don't know, as if it was so much a decision as it was a situation. We received a school threat notice from the Police Department. The problem with this was that it came right as we had launched the buses to pick the kids up for the middle school. So we get a call from the Police Chief, there's been a threat, you know, so everybody's moving and doing our normal threat, you know, assessment process where you try to determine if it's real or not and what have you. And, and just to kind of take a step back, you know, so we have the most up-to-date safety protocols in Norwood that there are out there. Part of that is the chief, who's now retired, is just absolutely incredible, and just a great person to work with, but he's always on top of, you know, the first, the latest and greatest thing from the FBI, the Secret Service, I mean, we're constantly looking at that and going forward. So, and we had used the same protocols for, you know, three years without a problem. But this one ended up being different, and we didn't know until it was a little bit late. So what happened was, there was a text message that went to a group of kids the night before, and they shared it with other kids, but it didn't come to the Police Department till the morning, okay? And neither the Police nor the schools realized that it had been traveling around until after school opened. And, you know, for those who have worked in schools, you know that the two most chaotic times of the day, right at the beginning and the end, right? So, so we're trying to get everybody in, and so that caused a viral response that we became aware of about 30 minutes after the beginning of school starting. So the process went well, and we were able to determine that it was not credible. The other tick to this was that there was enough digital information that the Police felt that they could find the person responsible, so they didn't want us to say much. So that added some fuel to the fire. So that became an uncomfortable situation. Parents flooded the school and, you know, wanted to take their kids out and whatever, and obviously, we're not going to say, no, you can't take your kid. But in doing that, we had parents who were upset, didn't feel that the schools were safe and whatever, and the schools were safe because we pretty much knew early on that it was not real. But we couldn't say that, and, you know, all this other sort of stuff. So, so what happened from then was there was a community, you know, piece of, do I have to stop or do you?
No, you're fine.
Okay, all right. So, so I'll try to be quick. So basically, we went through, got through the day, did our plan, the kids came back. This was on a Friday, so we kind of had the weekend, came back on Monday, but there was still that nervousness in the community. And the school committee was getting phone calls, I was getting phone calls, the principals getting phone calls. And anytime we have an incident that's not going well, we do an incident response review. So we went through that process with the Police Chief, you know, with the Principal, myself, other members of the Safety and Security Team, went through that and identified things that, you know, we needed to do better. First is kind of have some pre-canned responses to these sorts of things. The other thing is with the Police, when they figured out that it had been discovered earlier, we needed to know that sooner. And the other piece was that we really needed to educate parents on what these things actually mean, because there's a big misunderstanding between what that meant and what was really happening. And parents didn't realize that if there was actually a real threat, they wouldn't have been allowed near the school because everything would have been locked down. So there was a, there was a knowledge gap there. So we put together a plan to do that, and, you know, every single parent that wrote me or called me, I responded to, got more information about their concerns, and then responded to them afterwards because they deserved that kind of response from me. So it kind of was a sobering thing to realize that it was a comedy of errors, but both this, and the school committee was involved with that because we did part of that incident review with the school committee because they had gotten a lot of these phone calls. So hopefully that, but, you know, I guess the important thing is that, you know, you're going to have, you're going to have situations, you're going to have things that aren't going to work your way, but how do you handle it, okay? I handle it kind of taking it on head-on, this is a problem, we need to look at it, we need to come up with a solution, we need to communicate that going forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Kevin Hagia.
Before I ask my question, I just had a, you had mentioned before about your resume, and you were just talking about Norwood. Is your current status in Norwood as superintendent, are you...
My contract, I am leaving Norwood at the end of the year.
And do they have an interim or they...
They have, they've appointed a new superintendent.
So like you guys are overlapping?
Yep.
Thank you. What is, this is about curriculum?
Yep.
What is your philosophy on curriculum choice? And how would you ensure that the chosen curriculum is working for all students and being implemented with fidelity? Second part is, how do you plan to ensure that the programs that we purchase are fully utilized in our schools?
Yeah, all right, so there's two, so there's two pieces. So there's several things that, oop, I'm not talking into the microphone, I'm sorry. So there's several things we need to, need to look at. So, you know, the department has got a collection, the curate of curriculum materials that they have determined meet the state standards. So that's usually where you start unless it's not on that list for some reason. So start with those, and then you need to look at, so I'm going to go back. So when we, so I firmly believe in a curriculum review cycle, and that was something that I implemented in Norwood, they didn't have that before I got there. But to look at curriculum every four or five years or so, and it goes in a cycle, so it's not all of a sudden building from zero. But when you do that, the first thing to start with is an assessment of your current program, okay? Is it working, how well it is working? If it's not working, then you're looking for something different, or if the standards have changed, you need something different, right? So then we go to the curate, look at some of those programs, select two or three for a committee to look at. And when they're looking at it, they're looking for several things. First of all, cultural proficiency, does it represent multiple points of view and multiple cultural backgrounds? Is it, does it meet the state standards? Does it come with the pieces that are going to allow us, our teachers, to use that in a way that is going to meet the needs of our students? Is there some sort of measurement and progress monitoring piece of that? Does it have all those components, you know, the extra additional pieces, the remedial pieces to do Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three, and extension in our classrooms? So do, you know, all of that work, and then we're going to probably boil it down to a couple of choices we're going to try out, right? And I firmly believe in piloting, but not, you know, you pilot this and you pilot that, because then it's hard to have a comparison if you haven't used both programs, right? So we go through that, we do an evaluation, and then we kind of select a program. So then we get into implementation. I prefer to be in a situation where we are at least starting the training before we break for summer break. Coming back and trying to learn something as you're trying to set up your classroom is stressful for teachers. I would much rather have the materials and be able to have a PD session on how to use our new tools before they break. Teachers, being workaholics and type A personalities, will take those books to the beach and look at them and try to get ready for their kids and how to use the program, and then come back and do that. PD needs to continue on so that you're revisiting it throughout the year, it's not one and done. As far as, you know, and what I tell my teaching staff is that, you know, for the first year, I want you to implement it with fidelity. I want you to use it the way it's supposed to be used, okay, the way they're telling it, and then we're going to assess what works, what doesn't work, what else we need, and what we might change to fit the needs of our kids. And as far as ensuring it's being used and used property, that's a function of walkthrough observations, which I like to do with principals. It's also a function of, we call them instructional rounds, where you're going around, you're looking for things, and that's staff-driven. But hopefully, they're asking for feedback on how this is working, you know, with the new curriculum implementation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Well, that completes our rounds. So I would say we'll give you the opportunity to make a closing statement. You've got three or four minutes, go right ahead there, Dr. Thomas.
What if I need 20?
20 is going to cut into the next person, and we're trying to be fair, so I appreciate it.
All right. Yeah, so a couple of things, you know, hopefully, you know, you heard several things, but my core values really start with educating the whole child and ensuring every child has a path after high school, can meet success in the classroom, and reach their fullest potential. That's important to me, that's why I got into this. You know, I like to create learning environments where, you know, all students can be successful, and that takes a talent, and we start with one or two, and we keep adding to it. Collaborative and adaptive leadership, you know, being able to adapt to challenges that come along, using a team, developing a team, making it a high-functioning team to ensure that we're leading the district collectively, you know, in a way, together, is important to me. Building trust in the community and stakeholders, this is, you know, without that, you know, it's relationships, relationships, relationships. And I, as a superintendent, have to model that, have to be out there, have to be working with people, and there is, and building those relationships. And there's informal and there's formal, you know, showing up at a soccer game and having that conversation versus, you know, a, you know, a coffee with the superintendent or some other meeting where they can give me feedback. And I also include in that stakeholders, students, you know, meeting with a leadership group from the high school, from the middle school, you know, your fifth graders, you know, to find out what's important to them and how things are going, help me help the administrative team and the building principals meet the needs of those kids. I am laser-focused on making decisions that are in the best interest of my students and my teachers, and then, you know, for the district. You know, I don't, I'm not looking for personal glory, I'm not someone that goes out and shines a light on myself, I'm more interested in where the district is going and making sure that my kids are getting what they need. You know, and I firmly believe in the importance of education. I think unfortunately, you know, that thing that I mentioned before about 30 years of beating up educators is really hurting us, and the positive effect that we can have as educators on teaching, on our students, and ultimately on the community is so important to what we do. Personally, you know, trustworthy, honest, probably to a fault, compassionate, a lot of empathy, and, you know, my values are my values, you probably saw in there that I'm an Eagle Scout, I take that very seriously, I try to live to those ideals every single day. It would be an honor to be here. There is really, you know, when I look at the data and I look at the programs, and I look at the things that are being done, I'm really excited about a lot of those things, and I think a lot of it is just kind of getting those pieces kind of together and pushing some other buttons so that we can get where we need to get and, you know, really take this to the next level.
Well, I know we all appreciate you coming in today, Dr. Thompson, thank you very much for being here.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hagia.
I know we have a few minutes, and I just would like to ask one follow-up question.
Go ahead.
So we didn't touch as much on human resources as I would like so. We've had some situations here in the district where we've had some people that haven't been treating others appropriately, let's just say from the top down. What are your experiences with human resources, holding people accountable, making sure that staff's treating people right, the students treating each other right? Just the general human resources, what can you bring to the table?
Yeah, so basically, you know, I've gotten a little support over the years, but starting off, I was the human resource guy because the town didn't really have a fully developed human resource department. It does now, so I have someone to bounce ideas off of. I am not tolerant of mistreating anybody anywhere for any reason. It's one of my bugaboos, and, you know, perhaps if we have another conversation, I will tell you that probably the reason why I'm sitting in this chair is because of experiences like that and wanting to be the kind of leader that I would want to have, okay? So that's a, that's a, that's a no-go with me. You need to treat people with respect. You can have disagreements, you can not agree on things, but we're all trying to get to the same end. You know, that belief in the vision, that belief in where we're going is important. And, you know, making it a joint effort and created together helps us get there, but there's no excuse for harassing or being mean or dismissive to anybody. I have had a couple instances where I've had to call people out on it, it has been few and far between because I was convincing early on, let's just say, I was convincing early on, so we did not have that again. But it is, it is a core value that everybody be treated with respect.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anything, okay, thank you, Dr. Thompson, we appreciate you coming in.
Okay, I did, I did draft an entry plan, I don't know if anybody wants, I mean, I can, I can, I don't know how I give to you.
I can take it.
Scott can grab it.
Yeah, so just, not to be presumptuous, but just to know what I'm, so you know what I'm thinking. But thank you very much for calling.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson.
Ten minute.
Did you call for...
Ten minute recess.
Oh, we're going to grab it?
Yes.
We're going to grab, we're going to just, well, we lost time, so just five minutes. Everybody set?
Yes.
Our next candidate is Tracy Curley.
Hello.
Welcome, welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome. First question will come from Mimi Larrabee.
Hi, Dr. Curley, could you share with us a bit about yourself beyond what's on your resume? And please tell us why Fall River, why now?
Not on my resume, although I do think most people here know that I'm from Fall River, and it's really what brought me here and kind of, and brought me back. I am, you know, I grew up in the Fall River Public Schools, I grew up in the community, I grew up and lived in neighborhoods all over the city. I was, I think, I didn't know it at the time, whether I was different or the same as other kids in Fall River, but I've learned a lot about myself actually coming back. I did attend three different elementary schools. Before going on to middle and high school, I lived in nine different places by the time I graduated high school. And I was a kid in Fall River who, you know, I enjoyed free breakfast in the basement of a school every morning before it was something that we did for all students after the bell in classrooms. And I didn't, again, I didn't know if it was the same or different or whatever, but I enjoyed school, and I enjoyed how school made me feel. I, you know, I come from a really great family who was, you know, fell on hard times most of, you know, most of my upbringing, but I came from a good family and I went to good When I left, when I left Fall River and went on to college, I know that I was able to do so because of resources and support that I got outside of my family unit, and that started primarily in schools. I was a student who, you know, I did pretty well, and I, you know, I did kind of the things kids were expected to do, but I didn't, I didn't have a ton of support at home in terms of school. But I had teachers who supported me and encouraged me and just made me feel very welcome in our schools. I also, though, made a connection in our community. And it really wasn't until about, I think, two years ago, I kind of put my finger on why I love to do what I do and why it's so important for me to do it here. We had to do an assignment as part of our Lynch Leadership Program, and we had to talk, we had to develop an understanding and be able to communicate our moral imperative, and just, you know, why we come to work. And I think that people throughout their careers, I'm sure plenty of people here have had to, as part of their educational journey, kind of identify what it is they want to do and why, and I felt like I kind of skated through that assignment repeatedly.
Continue.
Okay, but so, but as part of this assignment in terms of moral imperative, I kind of, I was able to put my finger on it, and I was able to really nail it down and be able to talk about... And I was able to really nail it down and be able to talk about being able to dream with dignity. Because I had a person in my life who allowed me to do that, who was, my, my life was very much, very different from the life he was providing for his children. And I was welcomed into a home and I was made part of a family that recognized my family and appreciated my family and helped me appreciate my family in a way that made me know that I could want more for myself without forgetting who I was. That's what I really want to do for all students in Fall River of, you know, on a, on a whole diverse spectrum of upbringing and resources, is, is help kids, support kids to grow, really, grow, get better, be better.
Couple more seconds, Dr. Curley, a couple more seconds.
Okay. But in a way that really pays tribute and is respectful of where they came from. So, thank you.
Thank you. It was our error. We didn't tell you'd be on a four-minute timer.
Okay, sure.
So you hear the timer, we will give you a little bit of an extended time.
All right, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Please provide your philosophy in budgeting and provide us what, what your priorities would be in the Fall River Schools.
I think it's imperative that we identify our values and that we fund all of the things that we say we're going to prioritize. And then, within that structure, I think we have to look at what resources are most important to us. And I would say that our people are what's most important to us. And then when we think about people, we think about people who are providing direct services in the places where, that we are prioritizing. And so when we think about student groups, when we think about specific initiatives, we think about first, the people, and then the overall structures in which those people are working. And for us in the Fall River Public Schools, you know, we certainly are prioritizing, and I would, and I believe that we should prioritize student groups that are, that have been marginalized historically and for whom our data says, you know, we have not, we have not done all that we need to do in terms of providing support for students and ensuring that they have equitable access to opportunities in our district. For us, we know that that's our English learners and it is our students with disabilities.
Thanks. Next question, Shelley Pereira.
Thank you, Dr. Curley. Some recent surveys show there are approximately 55,000 various educational positions open nationwide. The teacher shortage is not just a Fall River problem, but a national crisis. Educators reporting causes varying from lack of support, unrealistic expectations, classroom safety, and pay. Why do you feel there, what, what do you feel are the reasons for the teacher shortage? And what experience do you have in recruiting and retaining educators and educational staff? Lastly, knowing our district, do you have any ideas to bring forth that can help us recruit and retain new staff as well as support the staff we have?
Yes. So since, you know, since I've been in the district, certainly, we've talked about recruitment and, and retention of staff, and I've seen strategic plans and I've seen annual plans that identify this very thing as something on which we, on which we have to focus. And I think that we've gotten better at doing some of the things that we, we've said we were going to do in terms of deepening our partnerships with, with local colleges, in terms of identifying and developing some programming so that we can, you know, maybe if we've identified some people with, with promise really, but that we're able to put them on the right track and in hopes that they are going to remain with us. And we make the education affordable and, and, you know, we make the right introductions and get them into the right programming, programs, but it hasn't been enough. Where we've seen success, though, in the district, and I think it's, it's something that we need to really drill down with, tap into, and then see how we go full-scale with it, is really around very personal recruiting. And doing it in a way that is, is selling our schools to people. So we have principals in the district who do it so well. They're out in, you know, wherever they are, they're beating the pavement in terms of, you know, what Fall River has to offer, what they are going to do to support teachers. And those are schools that are recruiting people and they're retaining people. They're not seeing high levels of turnover. Here in the district, I mean, I do think that we have to get very focused on some pay structures that help us to recruit people, but that is, that's only going to go so far. Maybe it's a signing bonus. Maybe there are, there's a stipend that's paid annually to people in high-needs positions. People won't stay for that. And I think you've identified in the question, you know, lack of support, unrealistic expectations. So we have to simultaneously build something within the district, and we are building it in terms of new teacher support. So we have a system that, you know, is really getting more formalized, where schools are building new teacher support programs, and then the district is doing the same. We've had teachers say at our new teacher, you know, I talked to some people, like, "What made you show up? Why are you here today? What brought you to this new teacher support session?" Teachers are reporting that they are, they feel supported in their schools, but they want to meet other new teachers, so now they're coming to the district pieces. So I, I think it just has to have arms. I think it has to live in our, you know, a multi-year strategic plan in a way that is not just, we're going to do better at this and we're going to measure this, but to identify the concrete steps that we'll take and understand that it is like a multifaceted, multi-year plan where these are the things we can do now, these are the things that we're going to do next, and then this is what's coming a year, two, three down the road.
Thank you. Next question, Tom Correy.
Hi, Dr. Curley. How are you?
Hello.
So my next question is, is surrounding alternative education. Would you be an advocate and in support of Fall River's alternative middle and high school, the Robert Madeiras Resiliency Preparatory Academy, when it comes to the curriculum, when it comes to physical plant, and when it comes to possible Chapter 74 grants to enhance the hands-on component to skills learning?
Yes. So I, I do think that alternative education for me is something that, you know, we do well in, in, in some places. And I think that there are some components to what some people might think of as alternative. In other districts, we see as part of how we do business, even in what we would consider a traditional setting, right? And so we've got the CTE pathways, and we've got After Dark, and we've got an Evolve program, and we've got Early College, and we've got dual enrollment, and we've got all of these things. And then we have an alternative high school. And so that, to me, sits out there as something, I don't know, almost like it doesn't need to be, right? In, in terms of being different from what we are already building out in a traditional setting, there has to be something alternative about it, right? There are some, for some students, a large comprehensive high school is not the right pathway. But it doesn't mean that within an alternative setting, we can't build similar pathways. It doesn't mean that, you know, at a resiliency, there aren't students who absolutely should be participating in an early college program, or that they shouldn't be, have the same kinds of access to CTE programming. So I just see it as, you know, it's an alternative site, and there will be some alternatives there that we're not offering at a larger comprehensive high school, but I do think that we need to have some similar pathways at the alternative site. So, yes.
Thank you. Next question, Sarah Rodjic.
Okay, so my question isn't on the question sheet there because we wanted to make room for social, emotional learning, so it's a little bit of a shift. So here in Fall River, we have roughly a 30, 33% special ed rate, and about a third of those kids are placed in sub-separate classrooms. So what's your experience with creating and implementing inclusive practices for students in general ed classrooms? And then how have you specifically worked to dismantle those systems of sub-separate placements as the norm to promote the inclusion of all students? And then how would you, or how do you dismantle those often siloed approaches to special ed?
Okay.
I can summarize that if it's easier, too.
Yeah, no, I, I, I get the gist, and if I miss a part of it, you can redirect me. But I do think, so you've, you've identified what we all know as, you know, I'll call it a problem, right, that we have here and it certainly exists in other places. In my experience, it, it really, it comes down to making sure that we have built into, you know, students' plans, visioning for what will happen most immediately and what a longer-term vision is for students. And so I think the most important thing is that we are including students where it makes sense in terms of the growth of the student, and that we're not including students in ways that don't, that aren't enhancing their experience. Because I think that sometimes what happens is we, we might put students into a situation where they're not successful. We haven't provided the supports. There hasn't been enough communication between special educators and general classroom teachers, and then it doesn't work out, and it was like, oh, now we're going back and we're going to a restrictive environment that is, is not, is not necessarily the correct longer-term placement for a student. So, you know, right now, we're, we're prioritizing classroom settings, general classroom settings, where we're trying to lower class sizes so that we have, that we're not having kind of this mid-year, oh, we're looking to, we want to include this student or this group of students, and someone says, "Sorry, no room." And now we're scrambling to try to make, to create a setting that doesn't exist. So I think it comes down to preparation for, like, you're committing to it. It's about like getting an entire community to have that vision and to commit to that kind of programming so that we are planning for it and we do have, that there are plans in place. So I, I think for some students, that happens in, you know, it's part of the day in a social setting, and maybe we start by integrating students during morning meeting, or we're doing it in a way where there is, you know, still in more intensive support around some academics where someone is accompanying students, a student into an inclusion setting. It's about meeting the needs of the individual student and, and building a system that's ready for that.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next question, Kevin Aguirre.
I thought it was going to be Bobby, but.
Oh, I'm sorry. My mistake. You are correct, Mr. Aguirre. I'm sorry, Bobby, Bobby Bailey. I skipped you.
He's quiet.
During your tenure as a leader, can you name any specific initiatives or programs that you've implemented or plan to implement to promote cultural proficiency in the district?
Yes, so I mean, right now, we're in, you know, we're in the midst of this very kind of planning. And it's not, it's not, wasn't new today or anything, but it's fresh in my mind because, you know, we were, we were talking about it this morning. Really having a vision for what it means to, to, for individual, for our entire district and for individual schools to be welcoming and supportive environments for students and for their families. So having a vision, defining that for people, and then spending very concrete time. We have an admin institute coming up, and we have some schools that are doing this so well. They're doing it well. They're, they've developed programs where they are truly working with families, and, and they're able to do that because they have, they've done the work on individual, on individual teachers in their schools and on the school as a whole. One thing that we've identified potentially as a, as a barrier for us right now is that, I'm going to be quick because I have four minutes, but we, one thing that we've identified as a barrier, as part of our moves toward cultural proficiency, that was part of why we were getting high-quality materials into teachers' hands, right? So that our kids could see themselves in our materials. We'd be able to provide them with experiences that played to people's strengths and things like that. But we hadn't done the work really of, of maybe removing people's personal biases, personal barriers to actually implementing the curriculum well. And so, you know, right now, we're planning on, you know, a little bit of, you know, a step back so that we can make sure that as we are adding resources, that we're developing programs, that we have, you know, buy-in but investment of our staff. And so that's, that's our most immediate plan. We've got so many resources in place, and we know that we have to work on, you know, ourselves as adults and as a school community so that we are making the most of the resources that we do have.
Now, Kevin.
It's not a secret. Thank you. It's not a secret that Fall River has struggled with academic achievement. Our overall data shows that we are barely getting back to pre-COVID achievement levels, which were not adequate to begin with. Can you explain any specific situations where you were instrumental in quote-unquote "moving the needle" to improve academic achievement data in an urban school system?
Yes. So I think that I would agree that overall, it's, it's acknowledged, and we, and we talk about it all of the time, how when the state was really encouraging districts to get back to pre-pandemic, and we were like, yeah, we're getting back there. We're not losing ground. We're actually, we're gaining some ground. We're getting back to 2019, that that isn't where we wanted to be in 2019, and it's certainly not where we want to be as we're coming out of 2024. So I think that my, my, my part, my being instrumental has really come in, in the form of laying the groundwork. Do I think that things that we are going to start seeing in acceleration of learning? Absolutely. We have spent time and resources either through our local budget or through grants, where we, as I've said, we're getting the high-quality instructional materials in people's hands. We're seeing moves in teacher practice that we know are going to translate to changes in student outcomes. We have data, you know, from this year, where we've been able to support some granted, grant, they were grant-funded, but grant-funded opportunities, where we, where we got in on the ground floor of high dosage tutoring and a lot of work around early literacy, where I feel like in Fall River, we've been talking science of reading long before it was like the thing in Massachusetts, and we're seeing gains. We're seeing gains at some of our neediest schools where we're looking at oral reading fluency data that says that, that we have not seen before coming out of some of these first-grade classrooms. And do I think I've been instrumental in that? Yes, because I think that I am, I'm working with, I'm working alongside and leading a team of educators, of administrators who have dedicated themselves to doing the work. And as the leader of that team, I do feel like I've had a part in all of it.
Can I just clarify about, and also open it up to any other situations that you've ever been in your entire educational career? Didn't have to be just now. I didn't know if the question didn't articulate that. But anytime in your career, have you had data that you've moved the needle with on academic achievement? I didn't want it to just be now, that's all.
Sure. I mean, I certainly, we'll always come back to this, but I think that in general, in Fall River, we've, what we've seen is making, making strides in, in pockets. And so in Fall River, as an administrator, have I been part of some of those moves where we, where we've started to make some gains? Absolutely. And certainly as a classroom teacher, I know that I was not a teacher in Fall River, but certainly as a classroom teacher, I do feel like I was instrumental in the gains of individual students and, and in classes.
Thank you.
Next question, Shelley Pereira.
We know that diversity and inclusion in the workplace promotes creative problem-solving, better decision-making, as well as increasing productivity and decreasing staff turnover rate. Fall River serves a deserved population, a diverse population, and we aim to promote diversity, inclusion, and equity throughout the district. Can you tell me what you believe the difference between equal and equitable? And do you have strategies planned to execute in the district to promote equity in all of our classrooms? Lastly, can you give us an example of when you have promoted diversity and inclusion in your workplace? Please explain barriers you had to overcome and if and how the outcome was beneficial to the group.
So in terms of the difference between equal and equitable, I think about, you know, it's the, it's the difference between giving everybody the same or giving everyone what they need so that they can, they have an opportunity to achieve the same. So I, I think what we've been most focused on, what I've been most focused on, is really about, you know, equitable outcomes through removing barriers to access. I think that, that's been the focus. When we think about promoting equity in all of the classrooms, I mean, we certainly have, we've, we've made some of those moves. I've mentioned the high-quality instructional materials. We know 100% that the materials are, they're part of a foundation, and they were a first step for us in terms of making sure everybody was getting just the high-quality resources in the hands of teachers and so that the students could make, so that we could hold students to high expectations in terms of grade-level work, so that there was that standard there for grade-level work. for grade-level work. An example of promoting diversity and inclusion in the workplace? Are you speaking specifically around adults? Yes. Okay. I think that, I'm skipping over to the next part in terms of barriers to overcome, and so I don't know that they're connected. But I think that, for me, I've promoted it certainly within my team, but I know that it's not a hard sell with my team. And I know that I work with people who are dedicated to the same kind of work and, and see the same kind of value. But I think that when we're, and we, and it comes through in terms of talking about who we're recruiting, how we're recruiting, and then how we're supporting people. So certainly, one of the things that we've identified is the fact that we don't always have stu, teachers and other staff who mirror the demographics of our students. And I'll be honest with you, we came across some questions last year from candidates who asked us, who wanted to know, what are the numbers? Like, how many people of color do you have that are principals? How many people of color do you have that are administrators and teachers? And that really, it was something we'd been talking about, but to be asked that question by one of our candidates, it was a very real moment for us in realizing that as we are trying to recruit people, we have to be very attentive to how we're retaining people and to make sure that we have supports in place for people and that people do have peers. Because just like our students are looking for people like them, I think we have adults who want to know that they're part of a community that values the diversity.
Good to know.
Thank you.
You good?
Yeah. Thank you.
Next question, Mimi Larve.
Fall River is a very large and complex urban district. Please tell us a little about your leadership style and how you will motivate and inspire our Fall River Public Schools staff to achieve their best performance.
So over time, and certainly since I came to Fall River, I think I've taken on a much more distributed leadership style, where I recognize that I am not the person who can get it all done. And I think that that's something that absolutely has evolved over time. For me, I think it's about recruiting team members and retaining team members who aren't necessarily like-minded in terms of their practice or the way they go about business, but they're like-minded in terms of what, you know, what we envision and what the goals we have for our students and for our staff. So for me, my, my leadership really right now comes from looking to empower people. I think that I have respect for people on my team. They have respect for me. Much of the way we do business is around larger collaborative meetings, and we've become much more collaborative, I would say, over the last two years, where people are sharing in the work across departments. And so we meet in larger groups, and then I meet with people individually. So, and that's a time for us to talk about, you know, data that they're gathering and, you know, you know, around their specific projects, what they're doing in terms of their annual goals. And, and then encouraging people really to, as I think about inspiring people, I think the one thing that we've all gotten better at in the last couple of years is really around, you know, our own vulnerability and ability to ask questions and to raise our hands during meetings and, and say, I want to know more about that. It doesn't always come in the form of someone at the table educating. It comes in the form of sharing resources and, and really encouraging people to, to go out and do some of the work. And so I feel like I inspire people to do that because that's what I do. And it hasn't, I, I think it's something that has been, that has motivated people on our team to do the same.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, Tom Corry.
So Dr. Curly, could you share your philosophy in building relationships with the many agencies in our community that provide services which in turn affect our schoolchildren and their families?
I think the partnerships are so important. I think that as we think about ourselves as part of a larger community in this city, we have this, we have this task as, as a department, as a school department, to educate children. The academic education is our primary task, and it would be, it's, it'd be wonderful to think that any of us could take on this idea that like, well, they have to come to us ready to learn, and if they're not ready to learn, I mean, what are we supposed to do? Nobody here does that. But in order to help students and support students in their readiness to learn, we do absolutely depend on outside agencies. So when I think about a philosophy, I think of it as a, it's, it's, it's a need. We're all part of this, like, larger, this larger organism, and, and we, and we need them, really. And so the one thing I would say is that I think we are very good in Fall River in terms of schools reaching out to agencies and agencies reaching out to us, schools reaching out to different departments in the district, and then sometimes we're reaching out to them. I think we, we likely need to take stock of all of those different partnerships, do, you know, a, a kind of a deeper review of what part different agencies are already playing and then what other resources they have, so that we can take a much more comprehensive approach, not duplicate the kinds of services unless it's necessary because we just plain need more help. So I, I just think that in terms of, you mentioned a philosophy, and for me, it's, it's really just more of a, it's just how we have to do business and that we, that we want to do business because we're all serving the same children, the same families, and all reaching, you know, toward the same goals.
Thank you. Next, Sarah Roddick.
Okay. So social-emotional learning's become a bit of a buzzword, but there's not always a good understanding of what that actually means in action. So how do you make sure that the design and implementation of SEL, Special Education, and Core General Education instruction align with the goals, with the values, the priorities of the district? And then can you describe a time when you've successfully facilitated that coordination among those stakeholders? And then how do you promote that shared vision and overcome barriers across those departments? So how is it, how is it all, how is it all aligned? How is that instruction all aligned, right, amongst those departments? And then how, specifically, how have you facilitated that coordination? And then how do you overcome barriers and, and share that vision among those groups?
Okay. So right now, our, we have a teaching and learning team that meets every week. And at the table, I will say that in the past, at that table was a teaching and learning team, right? Maybe an assistant superintendent along with directors from various departments. When we get together now as a teaching and learning team, we have three assistant superintendents at the table, and we have all of our departmental directors. And so we are doing that work right now of, of, of doing what you described, taking a look at what's, this idea of social-emotional learning. I mean, it's really about making sure, we talk about social-emotional needs, right, which kind of triggers this idea that like, we want our kids to have something that they don't, like, there's something missing. But really, it's part of the way we, 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 we learn and grow as, as a people, as a community. And so we talk about social-emotional learning for teachers, we talk about it for students. And right now, the focus is, how are we getting, how are we making that happen in schools in a way that doesn't just live in morning meeting? It doesn't live in a social group or a lunch bunch, but it is part of how we are educating our students. So that when we think about academic routines, we're building in an opportunity for some relationship building within there. We're, we're building in opportunities for students to reflect on how they are participating in a group and what role they play. And we're setting up those structures as, as part of teaching and learning so that we're not operating in terms of a special education department, someone who's overseeing social-emotional learning, someone who is, you know, very concerned with the, you know, how, how we're addressing or how we are viewing different types of diversity in classrooms. And so as the assistant superintendent, some people would say I'm part of the team of three assistant superintendents, but for me, I feel like it is something that's coming out of coordination through teaching and learning that, that this is happening. Thanks.
Thank you.
I have the next question. Obviously, Fall River struggles with student attendance. Can you think of some innovations, or some things you'd like to try to improve student attendance in Fall River?
Yeah. So, I mean, I would say that I am very lucky to be part of a team of people who are very focused on that. And so everybody knows that Dr. B has really taken attendance on, and we are seeing huge gains. Some of that is by doing some things that we've talked about over time, but they're happening now. And, and what we've done is, you know, being it, we've been able to tie some of the attendance pieces, you know, using some things that we have going on in schools academically to drive attendance. We recognize that at, you know, some of the lower grades, whether or not a student attends is not necessarily their choice, right? They have parents who are or not able to get them out and into a building in the morning. And when kids miss the bus, it's a, you know, that sometimes is the difference between attending or not attending. So, you know, a lot of the work that we're trying to do even around the academic piece is that communication with parents. So, you know, some of the things that we're doing with early literacy and tutoring. Now, we work with, we're working with an organization that says, hey, this only works if kids show up, right? We need to see this percent, percentage of attendance, or this particular thing isn't going to work. So part of what we're doing right now, and what I think we need to do, is communicate with families. As students are coming up, you know, through those elementary grades and certainly in kindergarten, when attendance, you know, doesn't quote-unquote count, but it does because that's where kids build habits, it's around that consistent communication with families. And, and really, the idea is by classroom teachers, not, not by someone in the office and not by automated call, but by having individuals reach out to families to say, your student wasn't here today, we missed your student, this is what your student missed. And we do have that opportunity in terms of some of our programming to be able to have conversations with, with parents to say, here's what they miss and here's the impact that it's having on your student learning. And we're getting traction there, where we're seeing student attendance increase, and we attribute it to that collaboration with families.
Thank you. Bobby Bailey?
Without jeopardizing sensitive information, can you describe a time when you specifically had to make a difficult decision that involved working closely with the school committee and how you approached the process?
I would say that in my experience, to be honest with you, there's always been somewhat of a buffer between me and a school committee. As a, you know, as a member of a school council that, that had to, you know, go before a school committee with school improvement plans, or as a principal, or even in my current role, I don't know where the opportunities have been necessarily for, for me to make a difficult decision that involved working with school committee. But I think I would say that the way, if I have a couple of minutes to talk about it, is, I, I think the way to do it really is around, you know, structures for communication and, and ongoing, an ongoing dialogue that happens, certainly within the, you know, within the confines, the structures, the regulations of how that communication takes place. But to be able to share information as appropriate that will, that puts kind of all parties on an equal playing field, right? So I feel like if I'm making a difficult decision and working closely with the school committee, it's, the school committee is going to have the same information that I have. As the superintendent and, you know, kind of the CEO of the schools, I'm someone that would be entrusted with the school committee to be, you know, a partner, somebody that, whose opinion is valued. And so I know that a lot of decisions, when we're dealing with school committee, the ultimate decision is by the school committee. But the idea is to establish myself as a, as a trusted, competent educator with informed opinions that people could look to and take into consideration when all of you are making your decisions.
Thank you. Kevin Aguirre.
What is your philosophy on curriculum choice? And how would you ensure that the chosen curriculum is working for all students and being implemented with fidelity? And secondly, how do you plan to ensure that the part, that the programs that we purchase are fully utilized in all schools?
So we've come a long way, I'd say, in the last few years in terms of building consistency across schools. And it's, it's not without pushback, right? So I think that we're look, and I, and I mentioned this a little bit before, where in some cases, potentially, we have, we, we did put the cart before the horse. And we, we said to people, here's this curriculum, it's really good. We, and we did. We vetted it. We, we've gone through pilots. We've, we got some very positive feedback from teachers. And then once you go to full implementation and teachers are feeling like they don't have much choice in the matter, it starts to get really uncomfortable. And so we've, we, I mean, we're, we've gone out, we, we have individual meetings with schools, we've met with individual teachers. Some of that is a listening tour because we're learning about where people are coming up against it in terms of implementation, or where people are coming up against it in terms of whether or not they feel it is having the desired impact with, with all students. But the message for us has remained the same, that we are, we build it into our instructional priority. We've done it for the past few years, where we're saying, you, you know, we're, we're going to work within this framework. We are going to support you around implementation of this product. And we feel pretty confident that we can do that because we did vet it so well, because we did get feedback along the way, because we didn't just pick something and feel like it was going to work. We depended on research, we looked at data, and now when, I think what we've done is taken some of the guesswork potentially out of whether or not this is a, a problem with curriculum, or if it's something where teachers just need more support, or if it's, we have, you know, are rethinking around the kind of support that we're, that we're providing for people. So I think we're, we're certainly operating right now where we're asking people to implement with integrity, where we're, we're, we're saying, hey, we, we don't know, we don't know all there is to know about how these different pieces can be leveraged. So we're doubling down on making time for doing that, supporting teachers during planning time to examine the resources, get a really deep understanding of everything that's built into individual curricular resources and, and supporting them to do it. And so when we're going into classrooms, we're always collecting data on whether or not people are using the prescribed resources, or if they're using something else. There's always a follow-up discussion with teachers around a choice that was made to not use. And then there's always the discussion around, you know, some people will say like, well, I needed this because our resources don't provide that. There's always that opportunity taken to bring people back to the resources so that we can identify for them and support them because it's there. It's there for the use.
Mr. Aguirre, like, we talked about fairness. You had asked the human resource question. We do have a little time. You want to follow up now, and then we'll ask the other member?
Thank you. We've had some instances here of staff being mistreated or treated inappropriately here in the Fall River Public Schools. Please explain how you would hold staff accountable for making sure they're not mistreating others, as well as what can you bring to the table related to human resources in general?
Sure. I mean, I think the, you know, first and foremost, you know, I, as the, the leader of a, a school district, would have to model the behavior that I want to see from other people in terms of my treatment of them, my respect for them, the, the ways in which I value what people are bringing to the table. Certainly, when there are instances, and, and I know of instances, where people, where people are mistreated, it, it requires action. It requires an appropriate kind of reprimand. It doesn't just require a conversation, I don't think. I think it requires more than that. I think that we, you know, we have to show, I think about it in terms of the, what we do with, even with students and running that parallel. If we can't, if we can't show students that we support them by standing up for them, we'll, we'll lose them, right? Because we're giving permission to people, for people... to people, for people to mistreat. I feel the same way about staff. We, we have a responsibility to protect our staff. And sometimes, I admit, it will, it takes protecting staff from other staff members. And I think that we have to do everything that we can to ensure that it doesn't happen again. And depending on the situation, I mean, there, there are a range. What I don't think it requires is just having a conversation. I think that it has to, we have to document it in a way that when it comes up again, we recognize it as cumulative, we recognize it as a pattern of behavior, and that we are, we are in a position to do something about it. I mean, that's, that's it. So, there was a second part to the question.
A second question, just what can you bring to the table related to anything related to HR, human resources?
So, I've never worked in human resources, but I think that, you know, in, in, in any of my roles, there's certainly, you know, there is an element to human resources, and an element to the way you treat people you work with, the people that you work for, the people who are working for you. And so, I think that I, I treat people fairly. I treat people in a way that I want to be treated. And, and I, in, in the way that I operate on my team, I hold people, I have high expectations for the way people treat each other. And, and I'm not, you know, I feel like I'm a resource. I will say this, I certainly have had people on my team in the past few years who have come and said like, I can't do this, can't work with this person, can't, I'm not getting anywhere. I, you know, I don't want to collaborate, I don't think it's going to go anywhere. And I have been able to facilitate improvement in that area. And I think that we are a pretty high-functioning team.
You have a few minutes left, unless someone has a question. Would you like, would you like to wrap up with, tell us a little bit about it?
Yeah, I already talked so long at the beginning, but I will say this. I mean, I talked a little bit about this when I interviewed with the original panel. I think that some people see that my being from Fall River and having worked in Fall River for 15 years is an asset. And I think that there are other people on this committee or out in the community who see that as less than an asset. So, I, I think that I really want to make clear that I am an individual, I do bring to the table my own strengths, that I feel like I've been able to leverage as part of a team, and I know that I'll be able to leverage as a leader in the district. I, I think it's a matter of, I think I'm asking people to recognize that. I'm asking people to recognize that, you know, my being here is an asset, because I do have the lay of the land, but mostly because I do know that, I do know, and I recognize that there are areas in which we need to improve. And I know that we have a team that I can leverage to make sure that we're addressing those areas. And I don't, I guess I don't want people to, I don't know, to say like, this is a person who's played a part in a district that I think is failing, or we think is failing. I'm asking people to take a look at the places in which we are gaining some steam, and I, and being able to identify the ways in which we are accelerating our practices, and our performance, and our outcomes for students. And, you know, to give me a chance to get the work done.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Philly.
Thank you, Dr. Curley.
Thank you.
All right, so. Okay, so we'll take about another 10-minute break right now, and then we'll, so we'll recon, 6:20, 6:10, there's some snacks in the back room. I'm going out to diamond, you go out there? We can go out that way, Bobby. Okay. Yeah, we'll be back here by 6:20, hopefully. We're back out, we're back out in recess. Our next candidate for superintendent, Elizabeth DeGault, welcome. Your first question you'll get will come from Mimi Larrabee.
Hi, nice to see you again.
Nice to see you.
Could you share with us a bit of yourself beyond what's on your resume, and please tell us why Fall River, why now?
Just hold on one second, I forgot to tell you, it's one-hour interview, we're timing it roughly four minutes for an answer would be good.
Again, it's a shotgun.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. There we go. So, I have been in education, this is my 31st year. I started out in Central Falls School System, went to University of Rhode Island. After that, went up to Central Falls, and that was my first teaching experience, physical education and health. I fell in love with the urbans, I fell in love with Central Falls. I was there for 20 years. I went through Race to the Top, I went through the takeover. I know what it's about, I know what urban life is about, and I loved every minute of it. And I would have went back to Central Falls if my mother did not have dementia. And I moved back to New York, and I took over a school district in upstate New York in White Hall. I stayed there for about a year and a half, almost two years, and my mother passed away. And I had an opportunity to come back to, took over a school district, East Bridgewater. It was a school that was $2.2 million in the hole. And I came back, I've always been a change agent, I've always been someone that comes in and fixes things, or someone that looks at a problem as the, looking for a solution. I'm not there to be a problem, I want to help, I want to support, I commit, and I get the job done. We went in, asked the, the unions to hold on, they were all in negotiations at the time, I asked them to just hold on for me, so that I could get in there. We didn't lay off anybody. Since then, I have had successful contracts with the EBEA Teachers Association, the Administrative Assistants, Assistant Principals, paraprofessionals, we call them teacher instructional assistants. And I just, just last night, or two nights ago, just finished with the Teamsters and Custodians. I love public education, I want to be with kids, and I want to be with teachers all the time. And when you ask about who I am, if people, if you'd ask, people say, would say, she loves kids, wants to be with kids, and wants to fix what we need to do for schools to make them better. My father was a teacher for 34 years, my mother was a teacher for 35 years, so public education is where I come from. And every child deserves an opportunity and access. But I also want to change the way we do things with teachers. We need to support them, we need to commit with them, and we need to strategize with them to continue our roles. And that's why, after nine years in East Bridgewater, I have, I am in a current contract, I was asked to stay for another five years in a current contract. I saw Fall River Public Schools come up, I looked into it, and I said, this is a bigger Central Falls. This is-
You can continue for a little bit.
Yeah. And when I looked in further and deeper into Fall River, I said, this is it. I want to, I, I want to go to Fall River. As I walked around East Bridgewater today, and looked at my kids, and talked to my principals, two weeks ago, or three weeks ago, whenever we had our last interview, I don't think anybody wants me to leave. It's emotional, but yet, this is a, this is, for me, an opportunity to be in a place that I could do some good. I know I could do good, and I want to be part of the solution, not part of the problem. And I think Fall River is, is on the cusp of just taking off, and, and just being just terrific, great. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question's from me. Provide your philosophy for budgeting, and what your priorities are when you're setting a budget?
So, my philosophy is, I, I need to have a reliable, predictable, and sustainable budget. I need to be able to make sure that I can sustain contractual obligations, but also support students in the classroom. I need to make sure that, how we provide and how we commit to our teachers, that we have professional development, we have good, good schools, clean schools. I saw the capital plan. I'm building a, a new school right now, I've done some other things in that area. But my philosophy in budgeting is really, is to get a sustainable, predictable, reliable budget that is not all over the place. And that I look at what's important, we put plans in place, what, where are we in the curriculum cycle? Where are we in our capital cycle? Where are we in our professional development? What do we need for professional development? You don't know what you don't know until I get in here and understand what Fall River needs. But the budget process, it's a process, it's a grind. It starts early in the year, and it takes the whole year. For a superintendent, and the, the, I have a finance business administrator, we work very closely together. We're talking all the time. We look at salary, we look at professional development, we look at curriculum instruction. We know that this year in East Bridgewater, we know this is going to be a big year. It's, comes up English. When you're doing English, it's, it's K through 12. And it's a lot of information, or a lot of, it is a lot of curriculum, it's a lot of instructional strategies, it's a lot of things that we need, and a lot of professional development. So, I look at the whole picture, I prioritize what the schools need, I prioritize what the principals are asking, and the leadership is looking for. And then, I look at what we have. And I look at our Chapter 70 funding, I look at what the district is going to get, or what the, the city is going to provide for us, I look at our federal grants, I look at grants. How many teachers are on grants? How many teachers are on the salary, on salary? How many teachers are, get stipends? Those types of things I look at, I look at at the beginning, where do I start with? And I think my philosophy is get it done with what you have, but also look for opportunities in grants, and other opportunities with partnering with other districts. I, I started the Early College, South Shore Early College.
Couple more seconds.
We have a consortium, and we started, I, I got together with 11 other school districts, and we've, we've, we've provided grants. We've had over, I think, five, this year, I think a little over 500 students go to early college classes that are in high school. I know you have a very vibrant early college here, I've met some of your guidance counselors at different events that we've gone in early college. So, looking at grants, looking at the whole process, working with your office, as well as working with my office and getting it done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next question's from Shelley Pereira.
Some recent surveys show that there are approximately 55,000 various educational positions open nationwide. The teacher shortage is not just a Fall River problem, but a national crisis. Educators reporting causes varying from lack of support, unrealistic expectations, classroom safety, and pay. What do you feel the reasons are for the teacher shortage? And what experience do you have in recruiting and retaining educators and educational staff? Lastly, knowing our district, do you have any concrete ideas you plan to bring forth to help support the staff we have, as well as recruit and retain new staff?
Thank you. I think there's a work, workforce shortage in all areas. In education, it used to be one of the highly most regarded professions that is out there. And every first day, or every young teacher I always meet, or when I, when I bring them on as a teacher that will teach for me, I always say, you are, this is the best profession that you could possibly become, be in. Because you get to be with kids every day, and you get to be with other people who love what they're doing and love kids. The best part of retention is if people love it, what they are doing in the district that they are in, they will recruit for you. They will say, come to Fall River, be part of this school district, be with us. We have trouble with it, recruiting, we've, we go to, we go to colleges on recruitment days. We brought back 66 resumes from Bridgewater State and Stone Hill College back to East Bridgewater. I also went to one that we got a grant, Scott Neave from Carver Superintendent, received a grant for trying to get minority teachers to teach, to come in, to become into the profession, and to teach in, in the South Shore. And we went down to Plymouth three week, three weeks ago, did not have a great turnout. But we did it, and if we keep doing it, more and more people will see that we want more, more educators, and more diverse educators. There's a teacher sort, I do think that, I don't know if there's unrealist, I, I do think that educators say that there's a lack of support. We need to do a better job of that. Those, that's one thing that I could tell you, my teachers and my principals would, would never say, that they do not have support for me. Unrealistic expectations, I do think that people have unrealistic expectations in every, every part of their, their lives. Classroom safety and classroom pay, I started at $22,000 a year, 31 years ago. We've come a long way, but we also can, we need to go a little further. There are different ways of getting there, and there are opportunities out there for us to pay our teachers, raise their salaries, along with paraprofessionals, along with all, all staff in Fall River. When I went to East Bridgewater, we, I looked at their contract, and I did some, I did some, some really good things. And we are right in the middle now. I think my top step is about $103,000. I do have some teachers at 109 and 111 at their top step. So, we have done some really good things. I just finished this, this week with the Teamsters, we gave a, a good increase to our custodians, we have increased pay for our, who really needed it, was our instructional assistants. Paying paraprofessionals $16, $17 an hour is not right. We've got them back, and we've brought that up. So, those are things that we need to do, and I have ideas for Fall River.
Got to end this one.
Yep.
DeGault, okay?
Yep.
Very nice. Next question is from school committee member Tom Corey.
Good afternoon, Ms. DeGault.
Yes, good afternoon.
As far as alternative education in that area, would you be in support of our Fall River Alternative Middle and High School, the Robert Madeira's Resiliency Preparatory Academy, when it comes to the curriculum that services that population, the physical plant itself, and possible Chapter 74 grants to enhance the hands-on component to skills learning?
Absolutely. Universal design by learning, alternative education, it doesn't matter how a student gets to the end, it matters that they, that they have growth. If we have an alternative school, and where we put them and house them, it should look like this beautiful Durfee High School. It should have 21st century skills and work opportunities for them to transition out to. And with having Chapter 74 grants, we're very lucky. There is a lot of money in VOTEC, and there's a lot of money in industry right now, especially in manufacturing. And with the grants that are being offered through DESI, and in Chapter 74, there is so much we could do. There is so much that Fall River could do with students who need alternative education. Doesn't mean that they need to be someplace else, it doesn't need to be out, but transitioning them in to a career, transitioning them to understand, listen, you got, we, we got to get you through here, and we got to work together to get you through here, be part of the program, be part of the solution, and let's figure out what you want to do. You have D cap here, so, early on in a student's education, we find out, what, what do you want to do? Where do you want to be in life? What's your career look like? And when we start doing those things over time- And when we start doing those things over time, we're all going to change our minds five or six times. And an alternative student will do the same. But an alternative student deserves opportunity and access like any other student. And Chapter 74 is a great way to get there with the grants and the money that is offered.
Thank you.
Next question, Sarah Rodricks.
So mine isn't going to look like what's on the sheet. So if you need me to repeat it.
Sure.
And I talk really fast, so you know, feel free. So here in Fall River, we have roughly a 30, 33% special ed rate. And of that, about a third of those kids are placed in substantially separate classrooms. So what is your experience with creating and implementing inclusive practices for students in gen ed classrooms? And then how have you specifically worked to dismantle those systems of sub-separate placements as the norm and promote inclusion of kids? And then can you provide specific examples of how you've worked to really dismantle that often siloed approach to special ed?
We are totally inclusive in East Bridgewater. I do not believe that we need to. Students deserve direct instruction in math, English, social, and science. If they need if we need instructional assistance in the classroom, then they will go with the student to provide support. We also want to offer PD to both teachers, not only special ed, but our the gen ed math teacher, the fourth grade teacher, who may not have a special education license, but we offer PD so that we can have two teachers work together. I started, I think it was five years, had to be three, four, five, six, four years ago. We decided, myself and my special education director, that we would have no more sub-separate classrooms, that we would have access and therapeutic classrooms and sub-separate. We would sometimes maybe have to have some quiet time or to remove or to bring students and have the sub-separate room available so that maybe have to work and and dive into a little bit deeper with the student. But we wanted that student to be with their peers in the classroom for direct instruction. And the sub-separate classroom teacher, what we started to do, we started in sixth, we started in third, sixth grade, we put two special education teachers on the sixth grade team. We put two special in our first year and our second year, two in the fifth grade, two in the fourth grade, and we just finished this last year in third grade. I've supported that through the budget process by looking down the road and saying, we need to get kids direct instruction and not be in a classroom down the hallway away from their peers. And even having that allowing that teacher to be in with another teacher to co-teach and have an inclusive classroom and look at universal design for learning. Be part of the solution and have everybody working together. We do not, we offer therapeutic classrooms, we offer access classrooms, we have, I try not, I try not to use the old word resource to pull out students. But if we need to pull out a student and to support them in their reading or their or their math, or they need some extra time on an assessment, we certainly do that. But we certainly support and I would support looking at that model here and saying, how do we get this done? How do we get all students in all classrooms? It's called direct instruction. We've got to get kids, all students take the same MCAS. All students take the same assessment. If you take them out of there, how do they know what's what's coming? If we're if we're using the using the same math book or they use the same English? So those are things that I would need to look at. Design, work with special education, work with the programming directors and find out what do we do now? And and how do we move it down the line? We've done that in East Bridgewater. We've done it at our high school. We've done it at our intermediate school or middle school, grades three through six. We have now started in our elementary schools, we do the same as well in our elementary school, Central Elementary. So we've done it. I've done it. I've been involved in that and I believe in it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next question, Bobby Daley.
During your tenure as a leader, can you name any specific initiatives or programs that you've implemented or plan to implement to promote cultural proficiency in the district?
We've done a lot in DEI. It's on my goals. It's in my evaluation. But one of the things that we have done is we have had a lot of professional development, but now we're into train the trainer model, is that we want our teachers to understand where their students come from. And we want to make sure that who our students are, where they come from, what they look like, that they have somebody else that and that we understand that, or they have someone that looks and comes from the same neighborhood. And in Central Falls, this was this is something I did. I implemented a community walk. And it was at the middle school when I was the middle school principal. And we went out and we visited homes. And my teachers, my staff got to visit where their children, their students lived. And we got to walk the streets and we went to people's homes and we said hello. And when you go to someone's home and you see where a child is coming from, you have an opportunity to say, wow, I didn't know that about him. I didn't know that about her. And your eyes open up and you say, okay, I need to do things differently or I can do things differently. We have our professional development at East Bridgewater. We brought in Dr. Khaleesi Warnum. She is working with our administration and our teachers and teach the teach, we are teacher the teach, teaching model or train the trainer model, where our teachers are now starting to train other teachers in in how to work with all students. When we talk about cultural proficiency, I don't look at it as as just race or one one avenue. I look at it as everything, the culture of your building. If you love it and you want to be here and you're committed to it, then the culture feels it and everybody is going to row in the same direction. So I would think that that would be if you want to talk about culture, that's where I would come from.
Thank you. Next question is from Kevin Aguirre.
It is not a secret that Fall River has struggled with academic achievement. Our overall data shows that we are barely getting back to pre-COVID achievement levels, which were not adequate to begin with. Can you please explain any specific situations where you were instrumental in quote unquote moving the needle to improve academic achievement data in an urban system?
Central Falls. Did a few things. In Central Falls at the middle school, we separated everybody into teams. We had, we offered support and we committed a lot of financial dollars to that middle school. And what we did is we put students on teams. We had special education teachers on the team. The kids were in inclusive classrooms then. And they they moved around in a team and it was all about success. When I find that in Central Falls, I became the high school principal. I opened up the ninth grade academy. There was a building that we were that housed no one. I asked the superintendent at the time, can I take over that building? She said, why do you want to do that? I said, I want to offer academic achievement, opportunity and success to ninth graders. We have a high dropout rate for these ninth graders. They don't want to come to school. We have excessive absences. We have tardiness. And our ninth graders, that's where you find them feeling their oats and they want to they want to leave. We opened up a ninth grade academy. We called it the Renaissance Academy, rebirth. They got done with eighth grade, they came out of a school that we that we hugged them every day at the at the at Calcut Middle School. And when I meant hug, we they knew that they were cared about. We had a 98% attendance rate. We were we were a Turning Points or Carnegie Unit School at Calcut Middle School in Central Falls as I was the principal. We were one of the number one urban middle schools on the East Coast while I was there. Our attendance, we increased it by offering, we were there in the morning, we were there in the afternoon. I offered stipends for people to stay after school and people just started staying. Kids stayed, we stayed. Everybody felt the culture was about success, to be successful. When we opened up the ninth grade academy, we had a guidance counselor there. We had it was an adjustment counselor then and social workers would come in. We'd call them social workers. We had the students got individual attention every day and they were on teams. We'd go to their house and get them if they weren't there. We offered breakfast, we offered lunch, we offered after school. They still had gym. We walked down to the YMCA. We offered swimming to kids that never knew how to swim. We would go down to YMCA. I got a program with the YMCA down the street because the ninth grade academy, we took over Broad Street Elementary. To achieve, for students to achieve, they need to feel that they can and that our teachers want them to achieve and that they feel that their teachers are here for them. And that's where as a superintendent of schools, that's my job. My job is to support. If you saw my organizational chart, I sit at the bottom of the organizational chart. My job is to hold it up with support. And when students are low achieving, we need to figure out why. Is it our curriculum? Is it our instruction? Is it not enough professional development? What do we need to do? Are our teachers not happy?
Thank you. Next question, Shelley Pereira.
So we know that diversity, inclusion in any workplace promotes creative problem solving, better decision making, as well as increasing productivity and decreasing staff turnover rate. Fall River serves a diverse population and we aim to promote diversity, inclusion and equity throughout the district. Can you tell me what you believe the difference between equal and equitable? And do you have strategies planned to execute in the district to promote equity in all our classrooms? Lastly, can you give us an example of when you have promoted diversity and inclusion in your workplace? Please explain any barriers you had to overcome and if and how the outcome was beneficial to the group.
Would I believe the difference between equal and equitable? Not everything is equal to everybody, but we want everybody to have opportunity and access to everything that we offer. So it may not feel equal to everyone at the same time, but the equitable, but we will offer opportunity, access to everyone. Equity in all classrooms is about, I I don't know what I don't know about Fall River. So when you ask me that question, I would have to say to you, I need to get in here. I need to be in the classrooms. I need to walk around. I need to listen. I need to talk to teachers. I need to hear from them. That's probably one of my better qualities is that I go out and I listen to teachers and I work with them and I need to know what's going on in the classroom so I can help and How do I promote diversity and inclusion in your workplace? Everybody in East Bridgewater has opportunity and access to every program, to every sports team. If we offer, if a child wants to take an AP class, he can take or she can take an AP class. We try to do and give kids everything that they need and to be supported to be successful. I think it's that important that I put it in as a goal on my evaluation. And right now, we're working on sort of of what that will look like and what who will do the audit and how what what the scope of the audit will be. And maybe that's something that we would need to do in Fall River so I could know what we need to do. And I would be I would be remiss if I were to come right across and say, I know what Fall River needs because I'm not in here. Because you got to get in here and you got to weed it out and you got to think about it and you got to you got to listen and then you can make things happen. I think the barriers that we all overcome is communication, is we don't communicate well enough with each other and we don't communicate well enough with parents at times and we don't communicate with the at-large community and tell them what we're doing and why we're doing it. And I think that's something that I have learned and that have tried to get take those barriers down and to be, I don't like the word transparent because not everything is transparent, but everybody should know everything that's going on. But I like when parents call me and say, can I come in and see you? Or I have an issue. I always go back to the principal first. I don't do it myself. I tell you this, I when you talk about overcoming barriers, when people call email me, I call them right back. And when the principal emails me, I don't email back, I go down to their school. So when you talk about barriers, I don't know what they are yet. I can tell you what I've done in Central Falls and I can tell you what I've done in East Bridgewater, but here you'd have to get in here. You got to dig. And then you work with each other and you make it happen and you keep moving forward and forward and forward.
Thank you. Next question is from Mimi Larve.
Fall River is a very large and complex urban district. Please tell us a little about your leadership style and how you motivate and inspire our Fall River public school staff to achieve their best performance.
Communicate. Get out, be involved in the community, be involved in my schools. I can't be at everything at every day, but I will be in their schools. I will be out in the community. I will go to cultural events. I will be part of faculty meetings. I will go listen. I will. My leadership style is to support my principals in leadership, support my teachers and all staff and to be part of the solution. I do not look at my class ever as half empty. It's always half full or three quarters full. I'm very positive. There is nothing so bad that we cannot handle. And I've told teachers that have been or have gotten in trouble, that have come into my office and all I say is, tell me the truth. If you went into East Bridgewater today and you asked one simple thing and said, what you know, what do you think about Liz? They would say, never lie. I can get through anything with a student, with a parent, with a teacher, as long as I'm told the truth right off the bat, we can get through it. My leadership style is commitment to my school district, to my faculty and staff and to my student achievement and to their families. My leadership style is on there every day. I don't think I've had a sick day in East Bridgewater. I don't think I had a sick day as a teacher. And I don't think I had a sick day as a principal. I'm there every day. And as a superintendent, I'm there every day. I do take a couple of professional, I do take by a couple of personal days because I do play golf and I do go into some tournaments, but other than that, I'm there every day. So it's collaboration, it's trust, it's integrity. Character is most important to me and communication, being part of the solution. We can disagree, but we can't be disagreeable. And that's something that I think that we all need to keep working on as a society.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next question, Tom Corey.
As far as your philosophy in building relationships with the many agencies throughout the community that provide services which in turn affect our schoolchildren and their
Absolutely. I need to have relationships with the police department, with the fire department, with the DPW, with the community action, the coalition groups, the festivals, go to the feast, listen to our families, be part of the community, helps people understand that the commitment from their superintendent is here, that she wants to be involved in what's happening. And when you talk about agencies, whatever agency, I I go to the Council of Aging and I always go and sit down with the Council of Aging and talk to them about my budget. We have coffee and I bring coffee and I bring donuts or whatever we bring and we sit down and we have. and we sit down and we have a conversation because they're going to come and vote. Whether they get picked up in the van and brought up, they're going to be there to vote and they should have an opportunity to understand and have a one-to-one conversation. Agencies, if, if we work with charter schools, if we're working with Bristol Community College, if we're working with domestic violent agencies, if we're working with what agency, whatever agency we're working with, I need to go there. They don't need to come to me. I need to go there. So yes, will I have, will I have involvement in agencies? Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question, Sarah Rodricks.
So social-emotional learning has become a little bit of a buzzword in education, but there's not always a good understanding of what this actually means in action. So how do you ensure that the design and implementation of SEL, Special Education, and core general education instruction align with the goals, values, and priorities of the district? And then can you describe a time when you've successfully facilitated that coordination and collaboration among those stakeholders? And then how have you specifically promoted that shared vision, built trust in that overcoming of barriers across different departments?
Yeah. So I think, you know, we needed social-emotional learning before COVID. COVID just intensified it and made us look at it differently. And when we came back to school, we were, we needed to put more adjustment counselors in. The needs of our students have grown. The amount of supports we had prior and still today probably are not enough for the needs of our students and our families. And that's something that goes back to the first question and second question of budgeting. You know, if our needs are getting greater in areas, how do we get that budget to facilitate and to operate and to support for social-emotional learning? What I think that what we have done, and I've always said this is, I not need only, we not only need to take care of children, we need to take care of the faculty and staff. We just brought in a program, Care Solus, to work with us so that we have, we can call and get on online Zoom. Any one of my teachers or staff and, and students can call and, and talk to a licensed professional. If we can't get to that student or that adult during the day or in a, in a relatively short period, we now have an online service for our teachers, our staff. Anybody can call and get 24-hour support. That was one initiative that we brought forward. We've had professional development in social-emotional learning, but I really think it comes down to us as people and how we offer and how we deliver instruction. And if a student has an IEP, to go back to your beginning, if a student has an IEP, they have it for a reason. We don't go out and just, you know, it's not, you know, you're just not throwing IEPs out. You know, we, 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 there's a process to get an IEP. And so if a student signed an IEP, then, then we need to do something and offer supports for that student. And if a student struggles in reading, if he struggles in managing his time, he will get, or she will, get frustrated. And then you need more SEL, right? So we need to figure out how to work with the child, understand what it's saying in the IEP and offer our faculty and staff strategies. How do we get through the day? What is the multi-tiered system that we use? How do we support students that are frustrated? How do we support faculty and, and adults that are frustrated? It should be part of every day. The opening of class should be part of every day.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's my question next. We're looking for innovative ideas to help improve student attendance. That's a big thing, student attendance. What have you done there?
Well, Desi's offering a grant for chronic absenteeism right now. We're part of that. I signed us up and we don't have, we're not huge chronic absenteeism, but I still wanna, I wanna be part of the conversation. I think the biggest thing, innovative ways to look at this is why are students not coming to school? Find the root of the problem. Go to their homes, get some people, get staff to homeschool liaisons, to work with students and figure out, why are you not coming to school? What don't you like about it? What can we, what can we help you? And what, how can we get you here? We usually find it starts in about ninth grade, eighth, ninth grade, and attendance starts to go downhill at that time. Then the dropout rate increases between 10th and, 10th and 11th grade. We know that. That's not something that's just started two years ago or in COVID. That was, it's probably been 25, 30 years since I've been in education. So innovative ideas, I think, is, first of all, I'd like to know more about why they're not coming to school, how we get them to school. I don't think, I don't think going to a later time is what we need to do. But there are different ways of alternative education and looking at it, if you've got chronic absenteeism, that student is, first of all, is the student truant? Is he, or tardy? Is he not coming to school or is he just coming late? So that's part of it. So do we have an after-school program to make up and catch up on that time? And show the student that we're committed to him or her to make sure that they're going to have and move forward into life. You can't go late to work. If you're gonna get a job, you gotta get on time. So we have to make sure that we embrace that and that kids want to come to our schools. They want to come to our high schools. And so you gotta dig deep, you gotta look at it. We've got to find the people to support it in staffing. And we also need to talk to kids who may have had chronic absenteeism, who are graduates and who work now and come back and talk to our students. If they're out in the community right now, that's probably one of our best ways to talk to students that are here now, that students that made that turnaround and said, you know what? If it wasn't for Mr. Smith or Mrs. Rodriguez to, you know, meet me at the door every morning, I would have never gone to school. You know, it's important. If I could have one, one teacher with one student every day or have five, five, or one, one teacher call five students every day, imagine what that would do. That would be an innovative idea and that would be something I would work on because I think you, you receive a call from a teacher who says, hey, we missed you today. Not, why were you not here? And when you coming back? And you missed this and you gotta get this done. How about, everything okay? What do you need? You need me to come and get you? Do you want me to send somebody to come and get you? So those are things that we need to change, I think, and it goes back to social and emotional. Are we, are we talking the talk? Can we work with kids and can we get them here and be part of their solution and not part of any, of their problem?
Thank you. Next, next question is from Bobby Bailey.
Without jeopardizing any sensitive information, can you describe a time when you specifically had to make a difficult decision that involved working close with the school committee and how did you approach the process?
That's all this chair is, as superintendent, is there are difficult discussions every day. There are difficult decisions that have to be made every day. I just had, my, my school committee just changed over. One of my favorite times is when the changeover and a new chair comes in. The chair comes in and I say, how do you want, what do you expect of our communication? And how do you want this to work? When you ask about decisions with the school committee, I think about, you know, what is your role and what is mine? Do I need to come to you for financial? Is the school district overspending? Are we in a hole? Do I have to come and tell you something like that and be, come in and say, geez, I, I think I've overspent? That should never happen because we should, I should have communication with the chair and say, hey, we need to talk and I, we need a subcommittee meeting. We need to sit down and hash this out. My job is to handle the teachers, handle my staff, work with students, and handle the school district on a day-to-day basis. My job with the school committee is to communicate to you what's happening on a day-to-day basis and what are you looking for and what are your expectations as a school committee of me? And when you ask me, are there difficult decisions? Absolutely. And there are difficult conversations. I've had them. They're not always easy, but they have to be done and that's my job. The person who sits in the superintendent's seat, the seat never changes. It's the person who sits in the seat. So policy, procedure, and protocols, that's what we do. It's how you handle them that is the difference between that person. So without getting, when you ask, how did I approach the process? I would go through the chair and talk to the chair and ask, what are your expectations? And how do you, how do you want me to work with you? And that's what I did last Monday with the new chair. And I asked him what his expectations of me and how he wanted me to work with the board. It was a school committee, so.
Thank you. Kevin Agnew.
What is your philosophy on curriculum choice? And how would you ensure that the chosen curriculum is working for all students and being implemented with fidelity? And second, how do you plan to ensure that the program, the programs that we purchase are fully utilized in all schools?
So, great question. So my assistant superintendent, head of curriculum instruction, we talk about what's happening, what direction we're going in, what I'd like to see. They bring it back to the professional development team and they talk about math, the math program. We did math, I think we're going into math, this, this year we're going into math. We've hired a math consultant to work with us. We're looking at new curriculum to go K through 12 so that we're seeing the same type of language. We're using the same type of book. My principals need to be held accountable that the curriculum is going to be used in the classroom, that our coaches are going to be held accountable, that they're helping teachers do, help with instructional strategies in the classroom. And that when, financially, when we buy curriculum, we're just not going out buying something off the shelf. That we bring in three or four or five different companies. We let them come in, we let them talk to the professional development team. Then we bring these, and we have a curriculum facilitator and we bring the curriculum out and we test them out at different grade levels. And we test all of them out throughout a whole year. It's a whole-year process. And the teachers decide along with the professional development committee and along with the assistant superintendent of schools. And then I will sit in and weigh in and listen to that and find out, is this, is this what teachers want? If I'm, be quite honest, if they're not part of the process in buying curriculum, choosing the curriculum, they're not going to use it and it's going to be up on the shelf. They're gonna go back to, there's always, you can always go back and have a resource of an old curriculum or an old book or an old strategy. You can always bring that out. But you can't, when you move into a new book, a new curriculum, a new strategy, you have to support that strategy and it's got to come from the building and it has to be come from the teachers. Because if they don't like it, they're not going to use it. Financially, the last, the last piece of that question, I think, was, you know, how do you do it? I negotiate with companies all the time. They'll come in and they say to us, you know, you know, this is going to cost you, I think we just pay $289,000. I was like, I don't have that kind of money. I said, can we do that over three or four years? Give me, give me, give me, I'll let you come in and take some pictures. I'll let you come in and, and video it, the instruction being done in the classroom. Take some, you know, we negotiate, that's my job and the business administrator's job. We, we negotiate with these companies and say, hey, look, we can't, we can't afford this, but we want this curriculum. Our teachers want to use this. Can we pay you over time? Can we pay you, you know, 55% this year, you know, 37% next year, whatever it is, and 18% the third year? And every, every time, we've gotten to be able to make a deal with any of these companies. My teachers are fully invested in the curriculum process, being part of choosing what we use in the classrooms. Then it comes to the Professional Development Academy and then we move forward and we purchase it. And then, and then I hold my principals accountable that it is being used in the classroom.
Thank you. Good. Well, that's, actually closes our rounds of questions, but Mr. Agnew had a question that he asked all the other candidates, so we might as well be fair and make sure everybody gets it.
So we've had some instances here of staff being mistreated or treated inappropriately in the Fall River Public Schools. Please explain how you would hold staff accountable for mistreating others? And the second part is, what can you bring to the table related to anything HR-related?
I would hope that no one treats anybody disrespectfully or inappropriately. Everybody needs to be held accountable for their actions. It starts with me and the way that I treat people. Regardless of teachers, regardless of, of staff, regardless of who it is or the community or students, I will treat everybody with respect. And that comes from me and that will come from my principals, my assistant superintendents and chief operating officers, and it will come from teachers to students. I would, and again, that question, I would need to dig into that. But to hold people accountable, that will not be tolerated. Nobody is going to treat people, you can, as again, you can disagree, but you can't be disagreeable. You gotta work together. We're one school, district. Everybody has to row in the same direction. You may not all, you don't have to like each other, but when you're working together, you're gonna love each other and you're gonna show the students that. If students don't see that cohesiveness, it's not, you're gonna have issues. Your second part of that question is?
Just what can you bring to the table related to human resources, anything like that?
So I think human resources is, is about human resources. It's about communication. It's about understanding. It's about being involved, hands-on, direct, not walking away and turning your head, knowing policy and making sure that people understand when we hold someone accountable, we follow a progression. If it's a discipline, we follow progressive discipline. We follow a procedure and a protocol. We also have conversations. Human resources is about human capital. When you have the right people at the table, the right things are going to get done. And some, we can always do this, but at the end, we have to figure it out how we're going to move the district forward. It's not about one person. I mean, I think the, the community is 90,000 people. The district is over 11,000. You have 2,200 teachers, you have staff, or, there's a lot of people here. Not everybody is going to agree. Not everybody is going to understand what everybody is trying to say and trying to do. But at the end of the day, you gotta believe in Fall River Public Schools and you gotta believe in each other to make that next step.
Thank you. You have a few minutes left. You want to wrap up a summary or let us know something?
If given the opportunity to come to Fall River, I think I could do a lot. I know I would do a lot of good. I would be part of any solution that you're looking for and I would come in ready to move, ready to work and ready to go tomorrow. It'd be difficult to do everything in one year. But that's why you have, that's why you, that's why you have a succession and that's why you have a plan. And whether it's the strategic plan that we work together on, whether it is a capital improvement plan that we work on or whether it is just getting to know my teachers and my staff over time, that's very important to me. My commitment is once I come in to a district, I commit. When I went into East Bridgewater, I committed, got rid of a $2.2 million deficit. We've never had a deficit since. We've never laid off a person. That's one of my goals. My goal is always to have a productive communication with the unions, work with the union presidents. So my commitment to you, to the school committee and to the district of Fall River, So, my commitment to you, to the school committee and to the district of Fall River, would be at 100%. I think if you were to ask people who I am, my character speaks for itself. I have integrity. I move people forward and I can work things out. And there's nothing so bad that we cannot work out. And if there's anything that people would say would be that. I like to have fun. I like to go out to the schools and see kids. I like to be part of the community, which I want to be part of the community. And I'm not, I'm not unable to have difficult conversations, whether it's with you, Mayor, whether it's with the vice chair of the school committee, or whether it's with the entire school committee. I'm not, I'm not so far away that I can't have communications with my teachers and staff and sit down with people and have conversations, or to go to a, go to a family home and have the conversation. So, if that's my, if my summary is, I've had a tremendous run as an educator. I love teaching. I love being principal. I love being assistant, deputy superintendent. I love being superintendent. If given the opportunity, I'd love to be in Fall River Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll take another five-minute recess and then we'll have our final candidate.
There's stairs on the other side.
We wouldn't want you to be able to see him right away.
That was actually the first test. Could you get up there?
Good evening, Anna. It's about a one-hour interview, figuring seven of us, lovely two questions, about four-minute answers, but we let people play around with it. We're not going to hold you too tight. And then hopefully have a closing statement at the end and we'll go from there. All set?
Yes.
First question is from Mimi Laravia.
Hi, nice to see you again. So, could you share with us a bit about yourself beyond what's on your resume? And please tell us why Fall River and why now?
So, I am a Fall Riverite. I was born here. I was married to another Fall Riverite. We bought our home here. We've raised our kids here. I have five Derpy graduates so far and one that will be a freshman this year. So, we are definitely all about Fall River is home. I, I don't know if I have a better answer than the why Fall River other than it's my home. I care deeply about this city and about its success, both for my family and all of yours. A little something about myself, in addition to, I'm on my, makes me feel old, 33 years in education, I'll say that I'm also a very proud Portuguese-American. My parents immigrated here from the Azores. I was born a few months after that. So, when I went to kindergarten, I did not speak any English. I learned kindergarten in school with my classmates. And it was certainly something that seemed normal when I was young. When I got to high school, I think I got a little, I'm ashamed to say now that I was embarrassed by it, you know, all the homemade clothes, homemade Portuguese food and parents with an accent was something that when you're a teenager all feels a little not great. As an adult, I've come to appreciate everything my parents did to make this wonderful life that my siblings and I have. You know, they worked really hard, got jobs. My dad had gone to school in Portugal, came here, had to get a degree translated, which meant coming all over again, which he did while we were all young and in school. And it was really something that's inspired me to believe in education and really see it as the great equalizer, something that will open the door for anyone. If you commit to it and you complete your education, it is the key that unlocks a successful My dad passed away just about two years ago this month and I'm reminded that he was the keeper of all of our Portuguese traditions. So, just to make you see how Portuguese I really am, when you do that 23andMe, fun fact, I was 100%. And so, I have committed that I'm going to take up my dad's mantle and I'm going to make sure that my, my own children and my nieces and nephews all remember and know their Portuguese culture. So, I know you're all Fall Riverites and you're acquainted with the Holy Ghost for Portuguese Church when we celebrate with a procession and those seven gifts. The Riley's will be hosting second Sunday next year, the gift of understanding. But I really just want my kids to appreciate all of that. And so, I think that's a lot of what makes me, other than my resume, is just that strong belief in family and culture and heritage. Thank you.
Please provide your philosophy in budgeting and provide us with what your priorities are.
So, I really believe that a budget should be driven by a district's strategic plan. What are our goals? What are our commitments to the community, to the students, and to ourselves that we're going to abide by and we're going to work towards? So, if we have a strong strategic plan and have our priorities laid out, our budget should fund those priorities. In my current district, last year, I was the CFO and superintendent for about six months. So, I, I did the, the budget process really from soup to nuts and got to see it on, on both sides, both the accounting parts of it, but also working with all the stakeholders and really creating a balance. So, I think it's really important to have a timeline to include all of the principals as part of that budgeting process. But before the principals come to central office to work on their budget or present their budgets, I think it's important for them to sit with their sit teams, to be with their school improvement teams and talk about what is it that our school needs to be successful? What are our priorities and what would we like this budget to fund? Particularly if you're doing zero-based budgeting, you have to know what you're working towards. And so, if you don't have identified priorities, what are you budgeting towards? And so, for me, that's where it starts. You have a school improvement plan, you have district strategic priorities, the budget process starts there. Then principals work with their school improvement teams, they bring it to central office, we work together, we have to review all the priorities of every school. It would be great to say, yes, we're going to give everyone, check the box, they all get what they need, but using that district's strategic plan, we can identify which needs are really going to move us toward those goals and how we're going to get there. So, that process really gets deeply engaged in, with the principals. I have always invited school committee members to those meetings because I think it's really important for you to see the nuts and bolts of how it's being built and, and really have a deep understanding. I pride myself on creating a budget document that's easy to understand and that any community member could pick up and read and understand what the priorities are, what we're spending our money on and what the costs are. I did a lot of work last year, two years ago now, when I worked at the Department of Ed on what's called student-based budgeting, which is kind of a nuance to zero-based budgeting, which looks at, it also reminded me, it was similar to chapter 70, but at a school level, where you fund schools based on the student needs. So, schools that have more IEPs, more students who are MLL or might be more, higher poverty level at a particular school gets weighted funding. And that's determined, you know, by the school committee by policy. And so, that student-based budgeting puts money where the most needs are at every school. So, I do think that in an urban district like Fall River, that's something that I would like to think about and talk about with the committee to really make sure that each of our schools have the funding to support the needs within their building. If we're going to say to them, reach these goals and meet, meet the priorities we've laid out, we have to make sure they have the funding to do that and be successful. But I like it to be a very open process, a transparent process that includes as many stakeholders as possible in those conversations. So, when we come to a public meeting, we all have a deep understanding as a team of what we're presenting and why.
Thank you. Our next question's from Shelley Pereira.
Hi, Anna, thank you. Some recent surveys show that there are approximately 55,000 various educational positions open nationwide. The teacher shortage is not just a Fall River problem, but a national crisis. Educators reporting causes varying from lack of support, unrealistic expectations, classroom safety, and pay. What do you feel the reasons are for the teacher shortage? And what experience do you have in recruiting and retaining educators and educational staff? And lastly, knowing our district, do you have any concrete ideas that you could bring forth to help support the staff we have as well as recruit and retain new staff?
So, the first part of that question is, what do you feel are the reasons for the teacher shortage? And I, I think they're outlined right in, in your question. I, I would say that one of the contributing factors, a significant contributing factor to that is really teacher morale and what we can do to support that. As you said, it's happening in every district. The district that I started working in now two and a half years ago was in the final year of a contract that had expired two years before. And so, the morale was really low and I knew that that was something that I had to work to improve if we were going to ever have a successful negotiations and improve the culture within the district. Because if the culture's not good, it doesn't matter what you pay people, they're not going to stay. You have to really work on that teacher morale. So, we partnered with our, our, our union and looked at some research-driven work around improving teacher morale. We partnered within every building with principals and union leadership within the buildings to identify what the highest needs were for support. And a lot of these things came up, safety, student behavior. And we asked the buildings to, to choose one, you know, what, what is the thing that's most impacting you feeling successful in school and, and happy in your building? And we asked them to work together on some solutions toward that. And our job as central office was to support whatever they decided they were going to do to implement, to work at, improving whatever that priority was. We've been doing it for about a year and a half now and we're really starting to see the benefits of it. Our teacher attendance has improved tremendously. You can just feel it in the buildings. If you walk through your school buildings, you can tell when the culture's really good. You walk around and, and you see people smiling and happy. And I'll tell you, right now in my district, I have two postings. And one is for, you know, that unicorn chemistry teacher that no one can find. And really in addition, not because we lost anyone, but because we need to add one. And the other is high school special, special education, which is also a really hard-to-fill Recruiting and retaining educators, I, I think it is a lot about the reputation you build for your district. People want to work where they know other people are happy. And so, part of creating that really good culture and supporting teacher morale is the fact that they tell their friends. And as teachers, we tend to be friends with a lot of other teachers and educators. And so, our best recruitment strategy are our own people. And that's why we have to work at creating that good morale because they are the best ambassadors out there. So, when they meet someone who's looking for a job and they say, hey, do you know if anybody? We want them to say, yes, you should come to my school. It's awesome and, and here's what we do and here's how teachers are supported. I, I mean, it, it is important to have that competitive salary and benefits package because that's just good practice. Any employer wants to make sure that they're going to attract people with a living wage and with benefits that can support a family. But I do really believe that in addition to that, if you don't work on the culture and morale of staff, you're not going to keep them. So, even if they came because the salary looked good, if they come and they're not happy or they're miserable, they'll go someplace else. So, I think part of that retention strategy is really about making sure that we're supporting teachers, we're supporting teacher morale, and we're doing those, sometimes small things, sometimes big things to make sure that they are, feel safe, that they have the tools they need to meet the, the needs of the students. I, the lack of support piece is one that we should never hear because that's us, that's our job. So, when a teacher says there's no support, then we haven't done our job. So, I think that's the piece where we can directly make an impact and correct specifically, oh, thank you, specifically that, that issue. But I do think that those pieces will help recruit and retain staff.
Okay. The next question is from Tom Corey.
Good evening, Ms. Riley. So, my question's around alternative education. And in your philosophy, would you be a strong advocate in support of Fall River's alternative middle and high school, the Robert Medeiros Resiliency Preparatory Academy, when it comes to the curriculum of the population they serve, the physical plant itself, and possible Chapter 74 grants to enhance the hands-on component to skills learning in a facility like that?
Thank you. This was exactly one of the first places I taught when I was in Fall River. And we didn't have a school yet. There was no alternative school. We were bopped around, I think, three or four years in a row where we taught, we shared a space with the National Guard, my first year, and then we moved to a senior center. We were on the second floor of a senior center. And then I think our third year, we were on the first floor of an abandoned other elementary school in the district. So, it makes me really proud that we have a dedicated facility in Fall River for both our middle and our high school alternative students because all of our students deserve the opportunity to be in a facility that welcomes them and supports them and provides what they need to be successful. The fact that we're building in more CTE programs just speaks to the fact that it's an alternative program. We need to provide them with opportunities to engage, be successful, and be prepared to enter the workforce or college. Many of our career tracks actually lead to either or, depending on the, the direction that a student wants to go in. But I am a huge supporter of Chapter 74 programs, period. I've grown them in every district I've, I've worked in. I doubled them in Bristol Warren in just the short time that we've been there. I think that kids need pathways and they need to really start to engage in the opportunity to try out careers through apprenticeships or through internships, both through Chapter 74, but even just through partnerships, partnerships with businesses. We've long held that kids can earn credit with community service. Why can't they earn credit with apprenticeships and opportunities for internships so that they can really dig in and get to know what are, what is, what are the things that they're interested in, that they want to do, and that they can do in the moment and learn about it and figure out, is this for them? What do they need to do to be successful in that kind of a field? Or maybe they find out that's not for them and then they can try something else that then might guide them towards their career path. But for me, it has always been a passion and, and really something I believe in strongly that students don't all learn the same way and we have to have alternatives for kids who can't be successful in what we call our typical high school structure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, Sarah Rodrick.
So, I too am 100% Portuguese, according to 23andMe. Fun fact. So, here in Fall River, and my question is not on the sheet because we did not have an SCL question on there, so I kind of readjusted my questions. So, here in Fall River, we have roughly a 30 to 33% special ed rate. And of that, about a third of our kids are placed in substantially separate classrooms. So, what's your experience with creating and implementing inclusive practices for kids in gen ed classrooms? And then how have you specifically worked to dismantle those systems of substantially separate placements as the norm to promote inclusion? And my third part is, can you provide some examples of how you've worked to really dismantle those often, that often siloed approach to special education?
Sure. So, I don't have any in my current district. When I worked in Portsmouth, we also did not have any substantially separate classrooms. The only classrooms where students were in the same room for, for more than literacy and math were intensive classrooms. And I'm talking about students who are in the 1% qualify for the ALTS assessment and needed more intensive care, but even those students were included for much of the day. As far, in my, my personal belief is that all students deserve to be with their peers. That is our number one goal. And it's our job to figure out the staffing and the support to meet students' IEPs within the inclusive classroom. And it's done in lots of different places. There's no reason why we can't do it here. It just takes thoughtful planning and support for, for staffing to make that successful. So, other than that 1%, every student with an IEP has to meet the same proficiency level as every other student that's in that classroom. They need to be exposed to all of the tier-one instruction that every student is exposed to. And so, when we pull them out of the classroom, we're taking that opportunity away from them. And so when we pull them out of the classroom, we're taking that opportunity away from them. And so I have never been a proponent of that and have been able to either not have it exist already or dismantle it and create an inclusive program. I'll tell you, even as a principal in Fall River, I was the principal of Talbot Middle School, and it was the ELL school at the time. And when I got there, all of the ELL students were in a sub-separate classroom. And I, well, how are they going to learn to speak English and hear the Tier One instruction if they're not in those classrooms? I was there a month, and I dismantled the program and pushed students into classrooms. It's just unacceptable to keep students from their peers and that Tier One instruction. I feel strongly about every student with an IEP being in their community and being able to study and learn with the kids who are going to someday be their neighbors and community members. If we have to send a child out of district, I need to know that we have done everything within our power and utilized every tool and resource that we have in the district and can demonstrate data that that wasn't successful. Otherwise, they belong in the classroom with their peers, learning, hearing that Tier One instruction. It's the job of the special educator to provide specialized instruction within the classroom. And I think that that's something that we really need to work on, both with professional learning and really with the perception of what special education support within the classroom looks like. Something that I have been working on in my current district is really looking at what is the role of the special educator in the regular ed classroom? And how are we making sure that what they're providing to the students is above and beyond what they're getting from their teacher? Most special education students are a year or two behind their peers. It's not enough for them to have one year of growth. So what are the structures that we're putting in place to make sure that our students with IEPs are growing at a faster rate than the regular ed students so that they can get on grade level? And so that sometimes requires different training for our special educators. It might require different structures, extended day, ESY, some summer learning to help them get there. But in order to close that gap, we have to continue to grow them at more than a year's length at a time. It's just not enough to get into one year. But I feel strongly that without the Tier One support in the classroom, we're just creating a structure that continues to grow the gap.
Thank you.
Next question is Bobby Bailey.
During your tenure as a leader, can you name any specific initiatives or programs that you've implemented or plan to implement to promote cultural proficiency in the district?
So I think you have to start by really valuing diversity. So this is a community that really values diversity. I'm in Bristol Warren, oddly, the only district in the state of Rhode Island whose percent of students who are ELL students are mostly Portuguese. Every place else it's Spanish, but Bristol Warren is still Portuguese. So as you heard before, it's a very nice fit for me. But we have implemented so many initiatives around really making sure that teachers have an understanding of cultures within their classroom. So I'm saying Portuguese is the largest group, but it's not our only group. We have multiple languages and multiple cultures in our district. We work really hard at making sure that, number one, we help principals and teachers identify which cultures are in their building, what are students' backgrounds, what are their heritage? What are we bringing to them? Because it's important for both the principal and for classroom teachers to get some knowledge around those cultures and backgrounds. You have to have some understanding. And I would never expect that any of my teachers or my principals come with that, because you don't know which children are going to come into your classroom on any given year. We have quite a few refugees from countries where we typically wouldn't have students from. And so you really have to do your homework and find out a little bit about their culture. How is it that we can best communicate with that family? So there's some homework on our end to be culturally proficient, to be culturally competent. You have to learn about the cultures that are in your building. And then I would say you really have to celebrate those cultures. So how are you letting that student know that they're a part of your school community? That we're recognizing during some special lunches, some of the foods from their country, recognizing special celebrations they have? There are certainly things that we can do within the classroom to welcome a student and to make them feel known in that classroom. There's also managing the dynamics of different cultures. And more so in a large district like Fall River, not all cultures are in harmony. And so how do you manage the dynamics of cultures that might have some opposing beliefs within a school, but still recognize, value, and celebrate all of those? And I think the last bit of that is really, at the end of every year, self-assessing. What could we do better? What did we miss this year? What could we make sure we include next year? How could I, as a teacher, as a principal, as the superintendent, get better at recognizing this culture, this heritage, this dynamic? I don't think that anyone ever becomes perfectly culturally proficient. We're a melting pot, particularly in a city like Fall River. We are going to have a dynamic change every single year, and so you have to keep learning. So there always has to be that professional growth, really. And with the internet, I say there's no excuse for anyone. You can Google anything, you can find out about a culture in a heartbeat. And then really, I think the most important part is that self-assessing. What can you do better in the next year? What did we miss out on? What are the families that we weren't able to connect with? How can we do better about that next year? And what is it that we need in our building in order to be able to do that? Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, Shelley Pereira. Oh, I'm sorry, Kev, I skipped over because there's no question. Kevin Nagy, please.
He really likes my question, I think.
I love your questions, Kev.
It is not a secret that Fall River has struggled with academic achievement. Our overall data shows that we are barely getting back to pre-COVID achievement levels, which were not adequate to begin with. Can you please explain any specific situations where you were instrumental in quote-unquote "moving the needle" to improve academic achievement data in an urban school system?
So I'll say I have improved outcomes in every district I've worked in, including this one. As a principal here in Fall River, I was the principal of the first expanded learning school. They published a book about it. I'm happy to share it with you. And also, we made the most growth in the entire state. And I'm going to tell you, the only people who can improve student outcomes are our teachers. So it's our job as leaders, as principals, as the superintendent, to support our teachers. They are the ones who are in the classrooms every day doing the hard work. So we have to make sure they have the professional learning they need and want, the support they need and want, and the tools they need and want. I saw in a lot of your website and in your background that you're purchasing high-quality curriculum and you're implementing that for classrooms. Those are great tools, but teachers need support in implementing those tools. So we have to make sure we're not just buying the materials, but we're providing them with that support. And then you have to really look at the student data. And that really happens building by building. Because in order for teachers to be successful and move student achievement, you have to look at what they need. So I'll tell you, currently what we do in my school, and I've been doing this since I was a principal, is we have grade-level meetings, we have PLCs, I'm sure. You've heard that acronym, Professional Learning Communities, where teachers at the same grade levels get together, they look at their data, they review the scope of the, whether math or literacy, whichever one that they're looking at. And they look at where are students struggling, where are our opportunities? Where do we see that most of our students are excelling? And we can maybe move a little faster through this part of the curriculum? And where do we need to take our time and dig in deeply to make sure students get this core curriculum? I think pacing guides sometimes hold us hostage, and teachers feel like they have a timeline on what they have to spend on. And sometimes we do a little too much reteaching, because we're worried kids didn't get it. But high-quality curriculum is always a spiraling curriculum. So there will be other opportunities for students to get ahead on topics they may have struggled with when you were working on them in the classroom. The worst thing that we can do for kids is not get through the standards that have to be covered within a year, because that's where students start to get behind. I'm done with using COVID as an academic excuse. We're on year four post-COVID. We have to stop talking about COVID as the reason why kids aren't being successful, because now we're back. We have been back full-time in school for a couple of years now. And so we have to just really focus on what are those interventions we're putting in place to support students? So you heard me talk about that Tier One. That's what the whole class is going to get. They're all going to work on that. Then we're going to look at our student data. Every six weeks or so, we're going to look at our internal assessments, and we're going to say, okay, it looks like three-quarters of the class is on pace, they've got this down-packed. What are we going to do with this other 25%? And maybe 20% of those kids need a little Tier Two support. They need some help. That would be one of the things I would need to know about. Where are the teachers in terms of their skill sets in providing Tier Two support in the classroom? That's something I've been working on in my district, because we have a new high-quality curriculum in literacy. And so they're getting acclimated to the text. And so there's some time, there's some learning in there, there's a span. But there's urgency around what we're doing with kids. Because kids are only in second grade once, hopefully, seventh grade once, and 10th grade once. So we don't have extra time or an extra year to give them the stuff that we didn't get to. And so Tier Two intervention should be happening in the classroom. And then for that small percent of kids who still may not be getting it, we have to find time within our schedule. I think I saw in your program of studies that you do have some win blocks, what I need now blocks. So those are the blocks we use in our district for students to get their Tier Three support. They might be getting enrichment during that time. Or that might be the time where we're digging deeper into a content with all of the students. But I think you have to use the data to figure out where it is the kids are struggling, put the interventions in place to move those students along, and then continue to provide the standards for all the students. The reason that we can't get them to proficiency many of the times is we're not getting to all the standards within the school year. So that is something that we have to work towards. Getting the standards, doing interventions when necessary, and then making sure that we're giving teachers the tools to do that within the classroom.
Next question is Shelley Pereira.
So we know that diversity and inclusion in the workplace promotes creative problem-solving, better decision-making, as well as increasing productivity and decreasing staff turnover rate. Fall River serves a diverse population, and we aim to promote diversity, inclusion, and equity throughout the district. Can you tell me what you believe the difference is between equal and equitable? Do you have strategies planned to execute in the district to promote equity in all our classrooms? And lastly, can you give us an example of when you have promoted diversity and/or inclusion in your workplace? Explain, please, any barriers you may have had to overcome, and if and how the outcome was beneficial to the group?
So equal means everybody gets the same thing. Equitable means you get what you need. And I think that's the way we always have to look at students. I am not of a proponent of the one-size-fits-all, because that's... I have six kids of my own, I'm going to tell you this, they're all different. So I can feel confident in the belief that no kid is the same. And so to look at them through the same lens is certainly not the way that we can promote diversity, equity, and inclusion. So I'd say a strategy that I have planned and that I brought up earlier when we talked about budgeting is really looking at that student-based budgeting. It really is an equity... It really is an equity tool that provides an opportunity for students who need the most support to get it. Districts that have used it, Boston is using it, Hartford used it, New Orleans used it. They have seen growth in their special education high school graduation numbers. And they've also seen gap closing within their special education students. So really thinking about putting our money and support where we need it, where the students are that need it most. Lastly, can you give us an example of the inclusion in your workplace? Sure. So this is also workplace, I'm sorry, I was focusing on students, but thinking about adults too. I think it's really important for us to make sure that we reflect our students. And in Fall River, we are a melting pot, and the adults are a part of that melting pot. So how do we make sure that we have inclusive profit... We have inclusive opportunities for all people to join our faculty, our staff, our team? How do we make sure they feel welcome? How do we make sure that students, that adults who may have a language barrier or an education barrier have a way to close that gap to be a part of our community? So we did some work in my current district last year and the year before to really support getting more teachers sort of identified as multilingual learner teachers. Because we knew, even with the support we were giving our students, we wanted more teachers to have that skill set. Because really, a lot of the work that you do around, and I'm sorry, I'm saying MLL, which is multilingual learner, and I know in Massachusetts it's ELL, I have to retrain my brain. So our ELL students really benefit from having teachers who understand different learning styles and how to approach literacy for someone who, for whom English may not be their first language. And so I think those educational opportunities are things we can provide both students and adults. So how do we help adults who bring a wealth of cultural competency that we were just talking about to the district, who may not have the credentials to necessarily work in the district? So how do we help provide opportunities for adult professional growth, both through professional learning, but also through attaining degrees, certifications, so that really our adult population can better mirror our student population? We need kids to see role models and to see themselves in those positions someday. We are providing students every day with the opportunity to see what it's like to be a teacher. So we shouldn't have a teacher shortage. So we're doing something wrong, because we should be modeling how awesome it is to be a teacher and what that good work looks like, and that every student in the room could be that next teacher who's standing in front of you. And so we really need to make sure that what we do for the adults create opportunities that someday our students will have. So I think that it's... The barriers are really many times funding, I would say. And then really getting people to take that risk, to trust us, and become a part of the system, and to join us in getting that, working towards that degree, or working towards that professional learning to be able to be successful within the district.
Next question, Mimi Larrabee.
Fall River is a very large, complex urban district. Please tell us a little about your leadership style and how you would motivate and inspire our Fall River public school staff to achieve their best performance?
So I think I'll... I would start by just saying I'm a very transparent leader. I try to be genuine in all of my conversations. And then in terms of leadership styles, I think you have to vary the leadership style based on whatever problem it is that you're tackling. I can certainly be in a very coaching leadership style, where I'm working with my team to really dig into a topic and listening to their opinions and expertise in an area. I try to always hire people smarter than me, so they can share all their information, and we can use that collective intelligence to really come up with the best answers. So sometimes it's about being a leader who's the coach and really bringing the team together to come up with the right decision for whatever problem we're working on. I do think you have to be the inspirational leader. You have to be the champion of that strategic plan. You have to be the champion of the goals for the district so that people want to achieve those goals and they want to follow you to get there. So I do think there's a component of leadership where you have to be the visionary. So as your superintendent, if I don't believe it, why would anyone else believe it? And so I try to model for my staff what I want. I have high expectations, I have high expectations for students, I have them for me, and I have them for my staff. And I try to model that on a regular basis. And then I'll say there are times when, as a leader, you have to make quick decisions. So sometimes there's not time for input, because there may be a crisis or there may be some emergency that requires you to be the quick decision-maker. And the goal is that by the time you have to make those quick decisions, you have built trust within your team and within the school community that people can count on your decision being one that's thoughtful, regardless of whether or not they were able to provide input on that. So I think your leadership style does have to vary depending on the problem that you're tackling. But I'd say if I had to identify some traits about myself as a leader is that I am a very genuine, transparent person. I try to be that as a leader.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Corey?
As far as this question's involving community engagement, and in your philosophy as the chief executive officer for the schools in Fall River, what's your belief in building relationships with the many agencies in our community that provide services which in turn affect our schoolchildren and their families?
Absolutely. So I am a firm believer that it takes a village. I know this from raising six children, trying to be at four soccer events on the same day. Takes a village. Same is true about a school. You need to partner with all of the community agencies, with, not just the community agencies, but with businesses and with all of the resources that we can pull together within the community to help make us successful. and with, with all of the resources that we can pull together within the community to help make us successful. I think that our children and their families are still coming out of that traumatic event. We all went through COVID. And so we still have many families who have needs that schools can't solve alone. And we need to really engage in our community partners to make sure that we are supporting our students, not just while they're with us for seven hours, you know, and 180 days a year, but that they have what they need outside of school. If we're not making sure that our, our kids have a place to live, something to eat, and, and good healthcare, they can't be successful in school. So these agencies help to provide us with those wraparound services. They also help to provide us with those enrichment opportunities within the district and to provide support for things that where they have an expertise that we may not have, both in mental health, but also just in creating relationships with students. Relationships are one of the things that really hold students in school. And so we can leverage our community partners to really help us build those supports. I know when we became an expanded learning time school in Fall River, we brought in so many community partners to support the extra work that we were doing. One of the goals of that grant was it shouldn't look the same as it did before. And so we worked really hard to implement strategies that would help students. We had one of the highest obesity rates of all the elementary schools in our school. And so we partnered with the nursing school at UMass Dartmouth. And they came in and they did lessons on good food, healthy eating, healthy cooking. It was amazing what that brought out. We had the doctor from Pediatrics actually say, what are you doing at your school? All of the kids in this school are really turning around their health habits. I mean, our community partners can have such deep impacts that we don't even recognize when we first bring them in. So I am a proponent of partnering with anyone who wants to partner with us. How can we figure out how we can create a mutually productive partnership for, for both groups?
Thank you. Next question, Sarah Rogers.
So again, my question's not going to be there. So if you need to repeat it, just, you know, and I talk really fast. So again, if you need me to slow down, just tell me. So social-emotional learning has become a bit of a buzzword in education. But there's not always a good understanding of what that actually looks like in action. So this question has a couple of parts. So how do we make sure that the design and implementation of social-emotional learning, special education, and our core general ed instruction are aligning with the goals, with the values and the priorities of the district? And then can you describe a time where you've successfully facilitated that coordination and collaboration among those stakeholders? Right, because we know that we have different folks. And then how did you specifically promote that shared vision and overcome barriers across those different departments?
So you're right, SCL's been batted around in many contexts for many years. Twenty years ago now, when I was an elementary principal, we did PBIS. That was our SCL. We had, you know, this positive behavioral support system in place for students. SCL has moved so far beyond that at this point. You heard me mention earlier, we've all been through a trauma, we've all been through COVID. For some folks, that trauma was very small, for some folks, that was significant. But it was a time where, where students really were home, didn't have the support of school for quite a long amount of time. And it really contributed, contributed many opportunities for additional trauma for a lot of students. So we are still working to overcome those traumas, the traumas that opioid abuse has brought to so many of our, of our urban centers, and really looking at a generation of children who need lots of support and role models. And so SCL has become, again, more than just this positive incentive system, but really has become a curriculum in and of itself. So there is some really good research-based curriculum. I think I saw that some schools in Fall River are piling second steps. So I have used second steps in, in three of my districts. It is a research-based curriculum that helps build students' emotional learning. It helps them to build the skills that they need to cope, to cooperate, and to be productive citizens. And there's some, some really great work in that area, really K-8. It has been embedded, it's, it's built to be embedded into a morning meeting, but is built on topics that teachers can weave throughout the day. So if, if the month's mantra is, you know, kindness, then how do we talk about kindness throughout the day whenever we're, we're doing our work? So teachers embed it in literacy, they embed it in, in their math groups, they embed it in any opportunity they have within the work that's happening in the classroom. Because we have to keep modeling it for, for students and helping students recognize what it looks like. At the high school level, I, I haven't found a really great curriculum around it at the high school level. It's a little trickier, but we have some opportunities during advisory. I would say that's a great opportunity to do some relationship building and really provide some targeted socially-emotional learning. How do we teach kids coping skills? How do we teach kids some of the simple things that can help them with their stress level? Deep breathing, there, there are some, some really easy things we could build into an advisory. That's not a heavy lift for the teacher who may be in that group, but really provide students with the opportunity to build those coping skills so that they can meet the challenges that are going to come before them as they work through not just school, but work and then anything beyond that. I do think that it has to be incorporated throughout the day. If, if we're not intentional about how to weave it into academics, then it, we're not modeling what it's supposed to look like. We're kind of doing it as a standalone. It's kind of what we say to kids in math, like the kids will say, why do I have to learn this? And I'm like, well, you have to know math, you have to be able to, you know, operate out in the universe. You have to understand what a fraction of something is. Well, you have to understand why kindness is important and how that's engaged. So we have been doing a lot, a lot of work. I think you asked for an example, right?
Yes, so I'll, I'll, I gave you a long one. So it was, how have you, how have you specifically promoted that shared vision, built trust, and overcome those barriers across the different departments of special education, that general ed curriculum piece, and bringing SCL into those realms?
Yeah, it's, it's by including the teachers in all of that training. They are the, again, they are the most important person in that classroom. And we really have to make sure they have the training they need and the professional learning they need. So we have done a lot of work and training around professional learning. We've really utilized our mental health support staff to also pitch in and, and help build up everyone's competency around providing socially-emotional lessons and support. And everyone's a part of that, no one's excluded from, from being a part of those lessons. So particularly for middle school and high school where it's advisory, everyone's got an advisory. So whether you're the special educator, the math teacher, or the biology teacher, you've got an advisory. And so we're working through those opportunities for folks to take part in, in SCL lessons across the board. Because then it's our job to model those lessons throughout the day. Just doesn't end when we're done with the lesson, but throughout the day, we're modeling what that looks like.
Thank you.
Okay, it's mine, Anna. Some innovations you believe that could help us with student attendance?
Yes, the other common factor for all of us, chronic, chronic absenteeism. Absolutely, I've actually been doing a lot of work around this. Really, it, it takes, it takes some, it takes some digging, it takes some data diving. There, there are some basic reasons why kids are absent. One is they don't have a connection to school. They don't have a connection to peers, they don't have a connection to an, to an adult. The other is they may have some kind of school phobia, some kind, some, something that prevents them from feeling safe about going to school, whether it's a mental health reason or a physical reason that just keeps them from, from coming every day. This has been, there's a lot of research around this is particularly true of students who were in transition grades during COVID. So your kindergartners, fifth graders, eighth graders, they're, they're finding like a real trend around kids who were in those groups really struggling with that and, and fitting that chronic absentee list. And then you have kids who can't get there. They either don't have the transportation, or they have to babysit, or they have to work. They have another barrier, another obstacle to overcome before they can even show up at school. So it takes some work to figure out why are students absent? Oh, I'm sorry, and there's one other one, or four. The fourth one is because we were able to provide online learning during COVID, we do have a lot of families who don't see the importance of in-person learning and think kids can just make it up when they come back. But I think the other part of the research has shown us that that online learning was really not good for kids. And so we have to break folks out of that habit, that they can just make up what they missed by doing online work. So digging into the root causes of what that absenteeism work is. And then one of the initiatives that we took part in, we actually partnered with a group out of Harvard, the District Management Council, and did some training for staff across our schools. And we made them attendance coaches. And they, this is not the truant officer or the guidance counselor, all the people who typically get to handle absenteeism. But we asked for people to volunteer to be trained as attendance coaches. And then we gave them very small caseloads, one to two kids. We identified about 30 to 50 kids per school who were either chronically absent last year, or just shy of it, or just over it. So we know 18 days is chronically absent. So kids who were anywhere from 16 to 22 days were assigned to this coach. And the coach met with those students every single day. If they didn't come to school, they still had to connect with them every single day. And 80% of our, of those students who were identified are not chronically absent because they had that personal one-on-one connection. We had a student who, the previous year, had made chronically absent. He had 19 absences the year before. As of, and I haven't checked lately, so I'll have to check again. But as of April 1st, he hadn't missed a single day of school. And when we asked him why, he said, because I know that Mr. So-and-so is counting on me and he's going to check in with me today and he's going to ask me why I'm here. So it's work. I won't tell you, it sounds really, I just made it sound so easy. It is not easy. It takes those, it's a commitment on behalf of the folks who, who asked, who volunteered to be attendance coaches. And they were really kind of across the staffing. We had TAs who did it, we had school nurses who did it, we had classroom teachers who volunteered to do it, you know, assistant principals who may have been voluntold to do it, but did it anyway and did a good job with it. But the outcome was so positive that it's something we want to continue. We want to try to recruit some more coaches for next year to, to continue that work. But part of what made it successful was regular meetings. We brought the coaches together, we said what's working, what's not working, who's struggling, who's still got kids who aren't showing up, what can we all do? What can we brainstorm around to help get that child to school? For us at least, what we found, that root cause around a connection to peers and adults made the most impact. That was the one that really, I think, brought us that turnout, that awesome improvement in attendance. But I, it's definitely replicable. Do it anywhere.
Our next question, Bobby Bailey.
Without jeopardizing sensitive information, can you describe a time when you had to, you specifically had to make a difficult decision involving working closely with a school committee and how did you approach the process?
I, I almost say every month, doesn't, doesn't this happen all the time? We have to be a team. I, I said to you before, a very transparent person, I, I, I try to be very genuine in my conversations. Gosh, I think I talk to my school committee chair almost every single day. There are no surprises, no surprises from the school committee to me or me to the school committee. When something's happening, there's a sensitive situation, there's a crisis, an emergency, a parent issue, a legal issue. We are in constant communication. My rule is always no surprises. I will always keep the school committee apprised of what's happening. And my expectation is when you hear something, I don't want you to have to worry about it. I want you to come to me and I will get you the info and I will get you the details and I will help you figure out what it is that we have to address, if we have to address anything. But I think it is, I don't think we can be successful unless we're a team. I think that's really important. I think that's something for you to think about as you choose your next superintendent. Whoever you choose has to be a team member. We're a team, school committee and the superintendent. We are the ones who drive the, the district. I need to be able to count on you and you need to be able to count on me. Communication is of the utmost importance. There has to be always some good reflexive communication. I want you to see and hear all the good stuff that I see and hear in the district. So I would share as much of that as possible with all of you. I think it also has to be responsive, like I just said, if there's an issue, an issue of concern, that first hour within a crisis is the most important part. It's the most important time. We have to show parents and the community that they can trust us and we're always going to give them the right information. They need to come to us and that's, we're the right source. We have to build that trust. And that comes with the trust that's between the superintendent and the school committee. And then I, I say the last part of that is really being reflective about when we communicate and why we communicate and the purpose of that communication, particularly between us. I try always to share all information with the full committee. The chair and I talk more often because there's just a lot of planning that goes between the chair and the superintendent. But if there's information to be shared, I share that across the school committee. There's not one thing that one of you know that you don't all know because that's important for the team. For the team to be successful, we all have to be playing from the same context. And so I try to be real thoughtful and careful about that. I think, did I get to your question, Bobby?
Next question is Kevin Aguirre.
What is your philosophy of curriculum choice? And how would you ensure that the chosen curriculum is working for all students and being implemented with fidelity? And secondly, how do you plan to ensure that the programs that we purchase are fully utilized in all of our schools?
So I know Massachusetts is working towards high-quality curriculum as Rhode Island, Rhode Island actually enjoys making things a law. So they made it a law that we had to purchase high-quality curriculum by set dates for English, math, and science. So we've been doing this over the last, I've been doing it for the last five years, both as a superintendent, but then also as the deputy commissioner. So in my role at the Department of Ed, I was the deputy commissioner of instructional programs. And it was actually my job to make sure we had vetted, vetted high-quality curriculum that districts could choose, choose from the law mandated, that the Department of Ed narrow the scope to three to five in both math, English, and science for districts to choose from so that there could be consistency across the state, but also be able to ensure that every student in the state of Rhode Island had that high-quality curriculum. Most of the curriculum that is rated green is very similar. What we found when we were going through the curriculum and as being part of the department, we were in Providence, the district of Providence was in takeover by the state. So we were also looking at high-quality curriculum for Providence. And so much like Fall River, Providence is a very culturally diverse city. And we wanted to make sure that the high-quality curriculum not just met all the components of a green curriculum, which is tied to research and the science of reading, but that included cultural proficiencies. That's not rated in the rating of high-quality curriculum. So that's like an extra step you have to take on your own as a district to make sure that it meets cultural proficiency. And so some are better than others at, at providing that. So that's something that I would want to be sure we were looking at because we have a culturally diverse district, that we're looking at curriculum selections that not just, that don't just meet the high-quality threshold, but also provide that cultural piece that's required. Otherwise, so much of our material is biased that without having some culturally proficient register, you're missing out on an opportunity to provide not just our ELL students, but our students who come from different backgrounds are being exposed to, in literacy, I'd say, in stories, in vocabulary, and in all things that would build their schema, their, their ability to create context. So that's an important part of that high-quality curriculum. That's just the selection of it. And, and I would say that should be done by a team of folks. It should be done by the folks who, who are really leading that work within the district, teachers, curriculum directors, the coaches, our, our English language learning staff. They should all be a part of that special education because we want to make sure that whatever curriculum we buy has all the components to support the, the different groups of students that we have in the district. And then once you buy it, that's the easy part. Buying it's easy, right? Pay your money, the books show up. The hard part is implementation and what that looks like. Because you can't just expect to give teachers a pile of curriculum materials and say, have at it. That is not going to work and it's not the intent of the program. When you talk to vendors and you meet with the ones who really care about their product, they talk about implementation and professional development. It's usually a thing that districts skimp on because it's an extra cost after you just spent millions of dollars on all of these textbooks and materials. You're like, oh, we can figure it out. Well, it's not like a user guide that goes to your car. And even that sometimes is too hard for, for folks to follow. It actually does require training and practice and reflection. It's not, here, let's have this training, off you go, take your books and go work on it. A good implementation provides training throughout the implementation. And I would say for, for the first three years of implementation so that teachers can provide feedback and ask questions about, well, the pacing guide says we're going to do this, but how are we, there's too much to do in this, we're never going to get to that part. And talk that through. And talk that through with the experts and the folks that wrote the curriculum to figure out how to parse out what has to be done with what should be done based on the students in front of you. Because a lot of this high-quality curriculum is really a soups-to-nut program meant to deal with every variety of student that could show up in front of you. So you have to learn the curriculum in order to be selective and make sure you're hitting all the components that meet the standards, but it's driven by the students that are in front of you. And that takes professional learning and time to be reflective.
We only have a few minutes left.
Sorry.
I'd like you to give us a wrap-up.
You got it.
That would be great. You went right up against it. Thanks.
So, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but there was a question. I know we're, I know we're in a rush, we're running out of time, but we're not going to give her that same question.
We're way over.
Okay.
We don't want to do that. It's got to be fair.
I have, that we have ten minutes?
No, we started at seven thirty-three.
Oh, I had seven forty.
No, seven thirty-three and eight thirty-two. I want to give her a few minutes to wrap up.
Sure. Go ahead, Kevin.
Go ahead, Kevin. Let it go.
I'll ask my question quick. So we've had some instances of staff being treated inappropriately here in Fall River. Please explain how you would hold staff accountable for mistreating others? And secondarily, what can you bring to the table related to human resources, anything related to human resources?
Sure, I'll answer quickly. I think it's really important to have, as I mentioned before, high expectations. Have them for myself, have them for staff, have them for kids. The way we treat each other has to be a reflection of how we expect to be treated, how we treat kids, how we expect kids to treat each other. And so I take it very seriously when we have a complaint on staff against staff or student to staff or staff about parents. All of those things require conversation, sometimes an investigation. I have done staff investigations. I have, of course, had to interview staff, interview families around a situation that may have happened. I have, as a superintendent, I've always supervised human resources, but also at the Department of Ed, I was the supervisor of HR. Since that was mostly adults without kids, there were more issues that were kind of relevant to what you're speaking about. And in order to create that good culture that I talked about early on, that's so important for hiring and keeping people, you have to address issues where folks are mistreated immediately. If there is mistreatment, there have to be consequences, and I'd say up to and including termination, depending on the extent of what the infraction was. But we can't allow anyone to be disrespectful to someone else, particularly not folks who are working together and should be team members.
Thank you.
I will give you a couple of minutes to wrap up, Anna, sorry.
Sorry. I mean, really, I'd say in a wrap-up, I'm going to tie it back to your first question that said, why Fall River. For me, it's more than why Fall River. It's really about values for me. I love this community. I love everything that we represent. And so to be the superintendent of Fall River is to be that representative, to help students see what an amazing city they live in, what all those opportunities are, and that they can be a part of it, be of value, and contribute to the place they live in, and then be proud of that place that they're in. And to me, the superintendent of Fall River has the opportunity to really be the model for that. To be the Fall River kid who became a teacher, who became a principal, who became an assistant superintendent, and then can be the superintendent of Fall River, just really, I can't quite put into words for you. So I would say that as my statement.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Do we want to go to a recess or just get right into it? Recession?
I could use the restroom.
You're going to use the restroom in five minutes.
She was going to go to the bathroom.
Just wait one second, Kevin. The chair declares that this matter of selecting a superintendent is appropriately before the school committee. The chair then opens the discussion now about the candidates. Mr. Aguirre.
Yes, so I want to thank you, thank all the candidates, thank the search committee for their support in bringing us the candidates. I enjoyed being here tonight, listening to all the candidates, and I think it's something that, it's a real big decision. And I think we all stated at the beginning, myself included, that the time is now that we needed to be all committed to hiring the right candidate, the best candidate, free of any politics or any other interventions. We just need the best person for the students, the staff, and the families in Fall River. I've done my research, I looked at all the resumes, the candidates, and I sat here tonight and watched and listened to all of the questions. The district right now has a tremendous amount of work that needs to be done. We need to overhaul a lot of different systems. We have a lot of needs. And my questions were on academic achievement, and I think that's the biggest piece for me that we need to turn around. Our district has had low academic achievement for far too long. And I believe that we had a, some candidates here tonight, but one, to me, stood out above the rest. An experienced leader, tremendous credentials, answered the questions spot-on, whether it was the special ed, the budget, the knowledge and the experience was something that I'm very happy that we had before us. She served as a business manager, assistant superintendent deputy, she speaks multiple languages, she's done, she's basically done it all. And I really, I was very impressed by the last candidate before us, Mrs. Riley. I think the time is now to bring in a seasoned leader to move this district forward. I think she presented the best out of all the candidates, and I think she gives us the best chance to move this district forward for all of our students, for our staff, and to work with us as a school committee to make this the greatest school system in Massachusetts. So I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Anna Riley superintendent.
Why don't we, why don't we give everybody an ample opportunity to talk and then you can make, with someone's second, your motion, I'm sure.
Yeah, I just wanted to make the motion, that's all.
That's fine.
As long as it comes back to me, I'd be happy to have everybody. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything to say about any of the candidates? Mr. Corey.
Yes, I took a, I listened intensively to each candidate and I took notes on each one of their responses. I have several pages of notes in front of me that I compiled tonight because as I write down their responses, it helps to embed inside of me a feeling that I get. And so many of the questions were great questions, I thought, that our school committee provided to the candidates. I was duly impressed with all of them. They all bring a real lot to the table. And in many ways, so many responses were incredibly similar. There were some that stood out. Each candidate had their own personality and style. Those kinds of things stood out. The thing I'm looking for as a school committee member in Fall River is developing a culture of consistency. And I know that as far as my own thoughts on this matter are concerned, then our candidate, Dr. Tracy Curley, stood out to me because she's been here in this district for so long and she's our chief curriculum officer. She has that data down pat. She knows exactly what direction we need to move this school department into, and she's, she has a working knowledge with this community because she's from this community. And those relationships are very well-established. They're also very well-established within the ranks of our school department. So as far as I'm concerned, my vote is going to be for Dr. Tracy Curley tonight.
I do want to make a comment about Kevin's motion. I think when everybody's done the discussion, we will just poll the members and they will give us their candidate. And everybody will have their vote and we'll see what we end up with. Someone that gets to four is the winner, whoever it is. And that's kind of what the recommended procedure is, so we don't really need a motion, Kev. We'll just go like we do alphabetically.
Point of order.
Mr. Aguirre.
Yeah, the reason why I make the motion is because as part of parliamentary procedure in any of our deliberations, when the president makes a motion and that motion is seconded, that particular motion is up for discussion. And I think it's important that if we're going to articulate the reasons why we're either for or against a candidate, we need to actually have that discussion on each one. So I respectfully ask that you stay with your commitment to allow me to make the motion. If it fails, it fails, and then we can make a different motion for someone else and discuss that particular motion. Because right now it would be too much of a generality and we wouldn't get a chance to actually discuss in public transparently for why we.
No, we're going to, we're going to have plenty of time to discuss, really. Ms. Pereira?
I think Sarah, maybe.
Oh, Sarah had her hand up first, go ahead, Sarah.
So, you know, I appreciate the different types of candidates that were presented. I think everybody had their own unique presentation and their own strengths and their own values that they can bring to the table. I think when we are looking at what we need to move forward, there were a couple of things that stood out to me that really, to be honest, didn't sit particularly well. One of those things was kind of hearing about fixing this community. I don't think we're a community that needs to be fixed. I don't think we're a community, I think we're a community that has needs and those needs to be addressed. But I don't believe that we are a community that needs fixing, right? That implies that we are broken and we are not a broken community. So that's, that's one piece of it. I do think we need someone with extensive experience. And, you know, I, since we're naming candidates, I personally would second Kevin's motion to nominate Ms. Riley, just given her level of experience in the district. That is not to discount Dr. Curley's experience in the district. I do think Dr. Curley's even last statement of asking us to consider what she's brought to the table is important, right? Her relationships, her experience in the district, her knowledge of what's happening here, that's all extremely important information to have. But I don't think we can discount kind of what that level of experience leading a district of this size, of this high need at that level. There are a couple of things that I think are, I think for Dr. Curley, it's a not yet, not a not forever. I think that, again, there are things that need to be had, and there was a lot of discussion about the needs of this district from Ms. Riley, including just how we discussed special education. There was some self-correction in how we talked about it in a more respectful, dignified way. There was a piece about bridging the gap and growing above the needs of kids in the general education setting, right? That's a piece that also needs to be integrated. There was a huge piece about understanding what the trauma has been created, not just in our district, but all districts. There were very specific answers, which I think are really important when we're looking for what our next move is going to be. And with that, I yield.
Got you. Ms. Pereira?
So of course, as everyone else has said, we obviously want to thank everybody for taking the time to come out. Many of the answers were very similar, as they probably should be, because they all had the same questions, right? Certainly, some people, I think, may be interviewed a little better than others, but that's, I don't think is the be-all, end-all. When I'm looking at things, I'm looking at experience, I'm also looking at consistency. So I hear what both my colleague, Mr. Corey, is saying and my colleagues at the end. And the way I scored it when I was listening, I jotted some notes, but then I gave every question a score based on one to 10, how solid I thought the answer was. So then at the end, I could sort of add that up and see. And Dr. Curley and Ms. Riley were the two, the two ones that scored the best in the way I looked at it. I think they're two amazing women. Both love Fall River, both from Fall River, both, I think, have Fall River's interests at heart. So this is literally, I think, the worst decision I've had to make being on here. I really don't like this part of my job. I think they were all very qualified. I'll be honest with you, the thing that kind of is my driving factor is, I don't know if it's the elephant in the room or what have you, but I sat here several, maybe a month ago, whenever we had the superintendent evaluations, and I was up here and three of my colleagues were not able to participate in that process because of conflict of interest throughout the district, which I understand. They're elected officials, they're allowed to serve, even though they have family members who also are employed. I do struggle with having a superintendent whose husband is a principal. I think that's a lot of, brings a lot of opening for conflict of interest. Certainly, I don't think that's the reason she shouldn't be hired, but it's something that I do think about in terms of, part of her job is to evaluate principals. And last time I checked, we made a motion that that's what the superintendent should be doing. Because for a little while, we had Dr. Curley, right, if memory serves me? We had Dr. Curley evaluating the principal at Durfee, but I think we changed that, I believe, not long ago, we had decided that wasn't appropriate, that the superintendent should be the one doing that, which is why some of my colleagues couldn't evaluate the superintendent at that time. And I agreed with that then, it should be the superintendent's job to do with it, to do that. And I still agree with that. So I think with that, I think the two strongest candidates we have out of those, due to all those other circumstances and the fact that I have every confidence in both of them, then I'm going to, I'm going to have to go today with Dr. Curley.
All right. So do we want to vote on Kevin's motion?
Should I say something first?
Well, I just wanted, then I was going to ask if we could go to the ballot method. You know what I'm saying? Then we go to the.
Yep, whatever you want to.
That way, we can, we can vote on your motion, you got a second on for Anna Riley, and then I would rather make a motion that we go by a ballot where everyone says who they're for.
I would think maybe you want to hear from everybody else just to be a consistent.
It's going to, you keep going to the ballot question, we're going to keep talking, but I want to clear up that motion, that's all I'm saying. So on the motion that Kevin made was for Anna Riley for superintendent.
Sorry, did you?
I did second that.
Sarah seconded it. I would like to go to a ballot motion. If Kevin wins, then that's, Kevin's motion passes, then that's a different story. But on the motion, so that we can continue talking and go to what was recommended as a ballot where everyone just says who they vote for, I would ask that if Deb could call the roll, unless someone has a comment and just.
I have a comment.
Mr. Aguirre.
So to me, it's a, it's a real simple, clear. I think it's clear to folks at home. I think we need experience. I think, I think we have some issues in the, in the district that need to be corrected, and they need to be corrected by an experienced leader. Dr. Curley is currently in the job, has zero experience as a superintendent, zero, and other members had more. Ms. Riley has over thirteen years' experience as a superintendent, several as a deputy commissioner of education. Her credentials are without comparison amongst anybody that came here before this interview. That's the reason why I am passionate about the fact that I think we should be appointing her as the position. To answer my colleague's question and to use as a concern whether her husband has the job, has a job currently, that should not prohibit her from getting this job, it really shouldn't even be a factor. Our policies are in place such that they allow for various situations to happen and there's processes to go through for that. Our policies allow that. So using that as a reason to say, we're not going to pick the best candidate that came before us today, I don't think is the appropriate thing. We have an opportunity to pick somebody that's the best candidate, and we're going to choose somebody who has never had any experience and is looking for a chance. And I appreciate a Dr. Curley coming before us, but nobody on this board can say that she has any experience relative to the superintendent's role. Budgetarily, she has not done a budget. She has, does not have the credentials of Ms. Riley or several of the other candidates. And I think we're making a very, very big mistake in putting her forward. What we are doing, if this vote goes the way it is, is we're doing everything that we said to this public that we weren't going to do. We weren't going to, we said we were going to hire the best candidate, but outside of politics. And if this vote goes the way it does now, if this goes, if this vote goes today and Ms. Riley does not get the job as the most qualified candidate, it is very clear, it is very clear that this will be about politics, which is a problem rather than the best candidate.
Kevin, can we please go to the vote and then we can do the same debate on the ballot question? I don't know why you're so headstrong on the motion.
Why, why can't I finish my conversation about the motion before us?
You're the only one dominating the vote. I was trying to let everyone have an ample opportunity.
I asked if you wanted to say something and neither.
But we were going to do your motion.
Mr. Bailey said nothing the whole time. Why, why can't he weigh in on whether he was going to go for a candidate?
Because we're going to do it on the ballot method. That's what I said to you. No one's going to be restricted from talking, but because your motion is more important to you, I want to get the best person for the district.
I'll stand 100% by my comments.
So we have a motion and a second on, on Ms. Riley. And all my request is that we go, if this motion passes, it's Ms. Riley. If it doesn't, then we go to the ballot method. I'm going to ask for a motion and a second, and everybody will say who they support after everyone talks. everyone talks, after Kevin talked. Deb, could you please call the roll on that?
The motion is to appoint Anna Riley as superintendent of our schools. Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
No.
Mr. Corey?
No.
Ms. Larrabee?
No.
Ms. Pereira?
No.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
No. Entertainer motion to use the ballot method to elect the superintendent?
Second.
No.
I'll make the motion.
Who made the motion? And you seconded it?
I'll make a motion. Tommy seconded.
Okay. Could we vote on just going to the ballot method to make the selection? Go ahead, Bobby, on the ballot method, buddy.
No.
He just wants to say something.
He wants to say something.
Okay.
Is it too late?
No, 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 we're not, it's nowhere near too late.
I thought we were going to vote on the ballot method.
That's what I wanted to do.
You gave me a chance to talk. You didn't want to talk. Now all of a sudden, we're going to change.
So everybody has a say. Call the roll on the ballot method.
Ms. Aguirre?
No.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
No. I don't even know what.
Mayor Coogan?
Mayor Coogan, yes. Bobby Bailey?
All right, so for me, I want to thank all the candidates for coming out. I think every candidate did a great job. I think they were very strong. For me, it's looking at all the candidates, like some of my colleagues said, I think it was similar questions, similar answers that were brought across. But for me, I thought a very strong candidate was Elizabeth. I liked where she was going with things, talked about putting someone seasoned in place. Although I think Dr. Curly and Ms. Riley did an amazing job, I think Elizabeth sparked my interest. I think she was different. I think she came with some different ideas. I think she was very unique. So for me, that's who I was really interested in at the time. But if you got to make a vote with the other two, we'll make that vote.
Anyone else want, Ms. Larrabee?
Thank you. And again, same thing, I want to thank all four as well. I've been fortunate enough, this is my second round of interviews. I chaired the search committee, and I really got to know all of them. When I left the original search committee interviews, I left the room struggling, because I knew it was going to come down to a couple, maybe three, in my, after my experience, three, two or three candidates. And exactly kind of what I thought happened. And I have to make a difficult decision, because I think Anna Riley is an incredible candidate. I think the other two, and Dr. Curly, is an incredible candidate as well. I think I have to lean towards Dr. Curly, because she does have a lot of experience in this district. She has learned from the best. She's had many opportunities to learn from the best. She has ample time to study under the people that have mentored her and have gotten her through the last three or four years, five years, in this particular position. So I think it'd be an injustice not to let the team that is here now stay together and continue the work to lead us into the future and bring this district where it needs to be. I have the utmost confidence in Dr. Curly and the team that Maria has kind of formulated and started to build. I think it's time that we give them more time to work together at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Corey?
Yeah, to build on my statement on the cultural consistency, first of all, I was very impressed with all the candidates. They certainly brought a tremendous amount of knowledge to the table. The reason why I like Dr. Curly is because she's been here since 2008 or 2009. She's been consistent. She's a graduate of our city. She was an outstanding student at Durfee High School. I'm looking out at the crowd right now, and I see other assistant superintendents, and I see our chief financial officer here. And I know that our team is already so integrated and so strong, and everybody, it's a well-oiled machine. This is why I look for the consistency. Fall River is unlike a town in Massachusetts or other cities. We're a city that's born on small neighborhood relationships, and those relationships have been deeply embedded for years in our city. That's the culture of this town, and she represents that with aplomb. And I have no reservations that there's going to be any type of hiccup. As far as experience is concerned, she's experienced. She's already driving the curriculum data in this city, and she does so, she's got a great relationship with Desi. And like I said, her support team is a great support team. Our school committee has put some wonderful people in place, and I'm placing my trust in that. Thank you.
Anything further? Ms. Roderick?
I have a lot of concerns about the things that I am hearing. I have tremendous concern about appointing someone who does not have any experience as a superintendent. Has Dr. Curly been able to work in her position as an assistant superintendent? Yes. However, she has no experience leading a district. To say that it would be an injustice to not put her in that position screams to me that this is very much a, this is someone who's been in our district, so therefore we must reward her by promoting her to superintendent. That is not how we have to look at situations. I look at situations as we need to have someone who has the best interests of the students and has the experience to drive that work forward. I'm sorry, but Dr. Curly does not. And I can appreciate that everyone has a different opinion, but what I see is a district that is in desperate need of solid leadership. And I don't see that in any other candidate. That is all I have to say, because I am speechless for one time in my life. And with that, I yield.
Mr. Aguirre, then Ms. Pereira?
I'll second what my colleague just said. I'm very concerned about it. I've been concerned about this process, how this process went right from the get-go. When I've asked for information relative to the search committee, I've asked for minutes of those meetings.
Point of order. Point of order.
Excuse me?
We're discussing the candidates, Kevin.
Discussing the candidates.
We're not talking about the process.
I have a rationale.
No, no, the candidates.
Right. This is a rationale for my decision on who I'm choosing to make. And I have a chance to articulate that again.
But then talk about the candidates.
So the process has not been transparent. It has not been.
Point of order, Mayor.
Kevin, please stay on the topic. It's not the process. We're talking about the candidates.
What is the, what are we doing right here?
The candidates.
So we're talking about picking a superintendent?
The four people.
So the process is very valid to me explaining why I'm going to vote a certain way or not a certain way.
It's the four candidates we're talking about.
Mr. Attorney Assad, can you please weigh in on this? Because I'd love to hear your insight.
This is, this matter is to discuss the candidates. The actual process is not on the agenda and would not be appropriate at this time. This is a ballot method that is being used. It is a situation where the individuals have an opportunity to express their views with respect to the candidate that they would like to see, as well as with other candidates. But with respect to beyond that, that is not something that is contained in the ballot method itself.
So how I arrived at my vote and my decision has nothing to do with this conversation?
I think, as long as you want to state what the situation was and why you would vote for a particular candidate as opposed to another, that's very valid. With respect to the process itself, it's not something that's within the ballot method that you would vote on or discuss today.
Okay, so based on that, we are making a major decision here. And this is an absolute travesty if we do not select the right person here. When I look at the situation and say, why are we going to hire a superintendent, as Ms. Roderick just indicated, with zero experience in leading a district? I can't imagine any other reason, any other reason than politics, or just because we want to feel good. And when we look at decisions that we have to make amongst our leadership, amongst our assistant superintendents, our principals, we hold them to hire the best person for each job, outside of politics and outside of anything other than the best person for the job to educate our students. That's what we hold our other people to. And we, as school committee members, aren't even upholding any of that at all. So what's happened is, we now have gotten a situation where, in order to justify my vote, I have to explain to anybody that's out there in the public listening to be transparent to say, why do I think that we need to make some changes relative to our administration? We don't have a well-oiled machine right now between our current superintendent, all of our assistant superintendents working together, and our principals. We have a very fractured department right now. We have a tremendous amount of issues going on that people cannot make a decision, people are asking for help, they're not getting it. We have a very broken administration right now. We have pockets of people that are going to do a great job, but we have a broken administration.
You're yelling, we're talking about four candidates. I don't know what you mean by administration. We're talking about the four candidates that are in front of us.
One of the four candidates.
Please, lower your voice, please.
One of the four candidates is a member of our leadership team. She has been a member of our leadership team for several years, more than every, all of the other assistant superintendents. Most of our major issues are related to academic achievement and instruction. Right now, our academic achievement, our instruction are in the tank. They're not good. Dr. Curly has been in that position longer than all the other assistant superintendents. So I find it to be an injustice if we're going to say at this meeting that we have a well-oiled machine and everything is great, because that is an actual injustice. That's a travesty, to have anyone actually believe that that is happening. Right now, we have a fractured system. We have a person that applied for the job, who has been in the job, and not getting it done in that job. But here in Fall River Public Schools, what we do is, we have a job, and if we're not doing good at that job, we fall forward. We fall forward into another job. And if we're not doing good at that job, if you know the right people politically, you fall forward into another job. And then you fall forward into another job. And lo and behold, what we have here today is now, with all of those things that are going wrong, and we're not a high-functioning district, things are not going well, guess what? Fall forward one more time and now become the superintendent of schools in a needy district with zero experience as a superintendent, zero experience managing a budget, doing human resources. I asked a question today about treatment and harassment. Dr. Curly was in her current position when people were getting harassed. And I heard it right here today. But I heard it today that we can't allow that to go on.
Kevin, why are you yelling?
I'm not yelling.
Yeah, you are.
Okay, I'll talk soft. I'll talk soft.
That would be much more appropriate when you're talking about harassment.
Sure.
Because we're getting harassed right now.
No, you're not.
Yeah, we are.
So Dr. Curly was in the position over the last four or five years when people were getting harassed continuously. And guess what happened? Nothing. So the best idea that we should do in that case is we should promote her to be the next superintendent with zero experience. It's a travesty. It's a bad decision, and I just, I'm totally flab-gasted that we are even making this decision. And then to add to that, we're going to use that the superintendent has to evaluate Mr. Riley as a principal, who if we do right now, Mr. Riley gets evaluated by the assistant superintendent anyway. So if we were going to hold ourselves to that standard, why wouldn't we be doing that all along? This is a travesty of being on a school committee member.
You know what I think a travesty is, honestly? You know what I think a travesty is, is the fact that we can't sit up here and disagree respectfully? And you're going to sit there, and you're going to accuse me of being political because I made a choice? You know what I feel is political? The fact that I knew who the two of you were going to vote for before I even heard an interview? That's political. Can make whatever faces you want. I'm done. We all have a right to make our own choices, Kevin. We all have that right.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
He just told me to be quiet, so it's fair.
Mr. Chairman?
Hold on, no, Kevin, you've talked enough. You have talked enough. Let other people have a turn, please. Let's be fair.
Let me be, let me be clear, because I have the floor now.
Yes.
What I think a travesty is the way that behavior is happening right now, that because people on the other side of this table disagree, you're going to act like we're political, we don't care, we're going to appoint somebody who can't do the job. Let me ask a question. The last superintendent we had, I thought she's great. I think she's great. I think we all thought she was great. We unanimously voted for her. Where was she superintendent before she was superintendent here? What district did she work in? Anybody know? Oh, she didn't. We promoted her from in-house. And it wasn't an issue then. Right? Wasn't an issue then. We're talking about the amount of experience somebody has, and we're going to blame something? We're going to blame a human resource issue? We are going to blame a human resource issue on one person? You're going to do that publicly when no one out there knows the story? You're just going to throw that out? And that's professional? And I'm sorry, but yes, Kevin, I was the one that with you, I agreed with you when you said the superintendent should be evaluating the principals, because before that, Tracy was doing Matt's stuff. So our colleague here was able to do her job, but you know what? I agreed with you because it made sense then. Guess what? Still makes sense to me now. I don't change my opinions because I have friends. And I'll be honest with you, if I was going to make a personal decision, it would be to vote for Anna, because I've known her almost my whole life, and I think her and her family are amazing. But I'm not up here to make personal decisions. I'm up here to make the choice that I think is right, and I don't want to be criticized because you disagree. I don't want to be called political or make it a stupid decision, or whatever insults that you want to throw to the colleagues on your team.
Move the question. Move the question.
Move the question is right.
Can I just say something very quickly?
Hold on, hold on. We got a motion, we moved the question. Does the debate stop?
No debate, two-thirds vote.
Two-thirds vote, okay. You know, there's no motion?
We're voting.
No.
It was the ballot. It was to use the ballot method.
Right. But we want to go to the ballot method now? Are we out of order?
No, she made a motion to move the question. Now we're going to vote on that. Two-thirds of it, the question moves and we vote.
So if anybody feels like they need to continue to talk, they vote no on the move to question, that's all.
All right. Call the roll on move the question, so we can get on with the night.
So what are we, we're voting to just move the question?
Yes, I need a second.
I need a second.
Second.
Second. I have a motion, a second.
Mr. Aguirre?
No.
Mr. Bailey?
No.
Mr. Corey?
No.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
No.
Mayor Coogan, yes. Back to the debate. Okay, Mr. Corey. And then Ms. Roderick.
I don't appreciate being called political because I made an informed choice. I spent my career working in this school district. I know a lot of people internally. I know the workings of this school district. And I don't like it when somebody says that the school district has problems that cannot be overrun. Every school district in the Commonwealth has issues. Our problems are because we're still bailing out of COVID. It still is a viable reason in this district, as many schools are. But I can tell you that our leadership team in this district is cohesive. leadership team in this district is cohesive, and I want to mirror the point that our current superintendent has served so admirably, and she had no prior superintendent experience, except that our current superintendent spent her entire, her entire career practically in this district from the late 70s until now. That's called dedication. That's called commitment. That builds consistency. That develops culture. Those are the values that I look forward to in driving our school district forward. And Dr. Curly is in that ilk. She is a highly intelligent woman with a tremendous support team around her to help her in all the decisions, especially the budgetary decisions, because of our chief financial officer's expertise in driving our budget, and my trust in his expertise. So when you label a district like in, in so much need, Mr. Agia, your lack of trust shows mightily, and I'm placing my trust in the leadership team that is already driving our district forward. That's the point I want to make. This is not a political decision. I like the level of consistency that Dr. Curly has shown in our district as assistant principal from Durfee, and now as assistant superintendent, and she's ready to face the big time. With that, I yield.
Okay. Ms. Rodrick, they told us she was next.
Trying to gather my thoughts. So when I look at candidates, I specifically am looking at someone that has a vision for special education, someone that has a vision for social-emotional learning, and someone who has experience in bringing those pieces together. I would like to feel like this district is a safe place to put my disabled son. And I have never felt that way. And I was really hoping that I could sit here over the last couple of years and try to move that change forward. I think we have Ms. O'Conchaine, who has worked extremely hard to do that. However, those changes cannot be made unless there is someone who has a vision for those departments. If I'm going to sit here and hold on to the values that I had about special education, about making sure that our kids are a priority, there's, there was one candidate that stood out to me. There was another, right? Bobby's, the Bobby's Choice, actually, also had some good discussions about that, right? However, Dr. Curly did not. And Dr. Curly has been in this district for a long time, and I have not seen those specific changes in special education and social-emotional learning that I personally am looking for. And when I say personally, I'm talking about advocating for the 3,200 special education students in our district. That is a substantially higher number than any other district in the state, okay? So if I'm going to sit here and make a decision, my decision has to be based on what my values are in those pieces, and those are my values. I will not be a part of a, of a discussion like this, and so the only last thing that I'm going to say is that effective immediately, I am resigning from this committee.
Okay. Anybody else to talk? Mr. Agia?
So I felt coming into here tonight that we had an opportunity to move this district forward. I 100% feel that we're going backwards. I think that when we sit here, we can, we can put our heads back in the sand and think that everything's going great. We can think that there's no issues going on in the schools. We can think that all of the administrators are in support of Dr. Curly. We can think that the assistant superintendents and so everybody's a happy family, everybody's doing great. But the sad reality of the situation is, that's not the case right now. Decisions aren't being made, planning's not being done properly. It's just, it's a really sad state of affairs when we can sit here and have the majority of members of this committee actually say that we're going to hire somebody with no experience. We are just definitely going backwards. It's a sad day, as far as I'm concerned, for this committee, for the school system, and for the city of Fall River. And if anyone gets offended, you can get as offended as you want. But let me just say for the record before I close, this decision is absolutely political. Period. I don't care what anybody says, you can get as offended as you want. It's political. It's not picking the best candidate, and with that, I yield.
Yes, I, I haven't even talked.
Oh.
I just, a second. I want to make sure that our teachers, and our parents, and our hard-working staff, that we're telling, all your schools are in the tank, no issues in our schools. Nobody up here saying that. This is hard work. If you noticed, every single candidate that came to that table tonight, every single one of the four talked about what was going on positive in Fall River. They said something good about the, the district. They wanted to be here. And I compliment all four candidates. But I know doggone well that the, that when people start a search for a superintendent, and the first thing out of their mouth is, we're going out of the district, then you know what that is. That is political. So my position is, we are going to vote on what we got from our interview and what we think is the best candidate, and we're going to follow along with the process that was given to us. And I hope everybody understands that because one person on the stage yells it's political, that doesn't make it so. I want you to know, we're getting the best candidate we can, and we're going to go forward, move in this district, and continue to show improvement. Since we voted to use the ballot method, Deb, would you please call the roll and ask each member of the committee who they're supporting?
Mr. Agia?
Anna Riley.
Mr. Bailey?
Tracy.
Mr. Corey?
Dr. Tracy Curly.
Ms. Larrabee?
Dr. Tracy Curly.
Ms. Pereira?
Dr. Curly.
Ms. Rodrick? Mayor Coogan?
Dr. Curly. Can you please, um...
That is...
Does anybody wish to change their vote? Could you please tell us the vote, Ms., Ms. Cabral?
Five votes for Dr. Tracy Curly, one vote for, for Anna Riley.
Um, the chair will now be looking for a motion. Move that. Dr. Tracy Curly be appointed superintendent of schools in the Fall River Public Schools, subject to a successful negotiation of a contract of employment mutually agreeable to the candidate and the school committee, signed by both parties or their designees. I need a motion.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion, a second. Deb, can you call the roll on that?
Mr. Agia?
No.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodrick? Mayor Coogan?
Yes. I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Deb, call the roll.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodrick?
Yes.